Good evening. Welcome to the May 20th City Council Meeting. I'm Gina Louis-Shara. I'm the City Council President and I will be presiding this evening. We'll begin with public comment. This meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. The raise hand feature is on the bottom menu bar under reactions or it's at the bottom of the participants panel which opens up if you click on participants that is at the bottom of the screen in that menu bar again. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me to ensure equal access and because of open meeting law, technical problems such as not being able to raise your hand are the only thing the chat function is used for and it will only be used during public comments. We cannot accept comment or commentary over chat, private chat, or chat only visible on Zoom during a public meeting is antithetical to an open public process in violation of the council rules for public participation and violates the spirit and potentially the law of open meeting law. If you want to submit a written public comment, please email it to citycouncil@northamptonma.gov and it'll be sent to all councilors and will be part of the public record. I will unmute each raise hand in the order raised to make a comment. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to three minutes. You are in no way obligated to use the full three minutes, but if you do, after three minutes, I will ask you to please finish your sentence. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment as it is your turn to speak. So while your comment should be directed to us, you will understand when we don't respond to you. Our rules also state that councilors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Your protected speech is a constitutional right and one that we ask you to wield with consideration and respect for all and with recognition that the public space that grants you that freedom is shared equally by everyone. Also according to open meeting law, if someone is disrupting a meeting, they may be removed. You may speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. I ask that all but the council turn off your video until called upon as comments are directed to the council and only the person recognized has the floor. The meeting can also be watched on channel 15 or by streaming on North Hampton Open Media's YouTube channel or their other platforms. They're available at North Hampton Open Media's government video archive channel on YouTube and I thank them as always for that public service. So we will begin with public comments. First up is Margaret Sawyer.
Hello, my name is Margaret Sawyer. I live in Amherst, but I'm one of the co-directors of the Pioneer Valley Workers Center in North Hampton. I'm here today in favor of the wage theft resolution that's being considered to support the state wage theft bill. We were thrilled a few years ago to work with the North Hampton City Council in passing a municipal wage theft ordinance which has made a difference in creating a financial penalty and making sure that violators can't get funded for certain amounts of time and can't receive public funds in North Hampton if they violate wage and hour law. So we're really excited that you're considering a resolution to support the statewide bill. We think it would make a really big difference. We've worked with the carpenters union and others to help workers who've been cheated out of their money, especially folks in the construction industry, but we also see it in the restaurant industry and in farm labor. A lot of people in vulnerable jobs and especially essential workers right now during the pandemic are at risk because people are really needing work and other people, their bosses can take advantage of that. So we really hope that you'll vote in favor of that ordinance, not ordinance, excuse me, resolution. We think it'll be an important addition in the statewide legislation. My children think so too. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Jose Adostra.
Hello, my name is Jose. I live and work in North Hampton with my three beautiful children and my delightful partners. I've been coming here since last year, which shouldn't really be the case because I feel like our local government should be able to hear and enact practices that address the issues that we have been bringing up since at least last May quicker than that. I'm ashamed of the budget. Again, I'm ashamed and insulted just like the 0.33% cut at the audacity. I don't know where he's buying them, but if he can let me know or send me a link to the discount audacity store that Narco which can find it at, I would love to feel like I could propose a budget like this and walk away feeling like a decent human being afterwards. I think that you need to defund the police by at least 50%. It would make everyone around here safer. I just saw them today with one of their new diversity hires, the only one that hasn't brutalized me this month. They were harassing someone in mental crisis. They assigned them a summons even though I offered to pay for the items that were quote unquote stolen on the spot. They said they're not interested in recovering the money. They assigned the summons to someone that was in mental health crisis on the steps of city council and, you know, and this is what we've been asking for since last year. Like, why are they there? Why are they interfacing with these people? You know, there's video, I'm tagging you. I live here. I've been here, been here my whole life. So again, you know, the amount that was assigned for the Department of Community Care is petty. You know, I don't know if the Air Force doesn't teach you how to listen or absorb facts. I wouldn't be surprised because it's a colonizer institution and most of that is just rape, genocide, and assault and bombings. Sorry, US military? I'm not that sorry though because that's the truth. So I'm not surprised that you don't know how to listen to your community or take care of people. I'm not, even if you're a parent. But, you know, the budget you would propose is insulting again, you know, like you couldn't learn from last year, you know, and it feels like the commission was a farce. Let me, let me just see my way out in a peaceful way. So I don't have protesters in my yard for a year. Okay, I'm going to assign a commission and by next year I'll have the budget. So you can just go in peace, right? Well, we are out there most of our days off and when my kids are asleep, trying to see how we can house people, what their ailments are and what they need. You're just trying to ease your way out. It must be nice. It must be nice to have that set of values to feel like you are paid almost $90,000 a year and you don't really have to do that much except for try to pad your way, right? And to pad the police budget again, right? That it must be nice. So again, I would ask the city council to call out the literal white supremacist rhetoric fueled mayor with White Supremacist Association. Chief Casper has tried her best.
Finish your sentence.
To make it seem, I will, to make it seem like it's not a white supremacist fraternity and like it's a police force, but the new hires have brutalized me and thrown me in prison. And the new hire today tried to get me to leave instead of advocate. It's not working. It's wasted money.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Erin Clark.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Clark. My pronouns are he/him and I'm a longtime resident of North Hampton. I've been a homeowner with my partner, our four children, and worked seven B for the last seven years. And also, yes, I am reading these comments, which I've prepared myself ahead of time. I know that was like a point of contention for some reason for some people last time as if being well-prepared is a bad thing. So yes, I've prepared ahead of time these comments. So just reading from those. I'm here tonight to echo Jose in calling to cut the police budget by 50% and to fund the Department of Community Care by at least 882,000, which is the full amount that was cut from the police budget last year and was never reallocated. If the mayor was willing to give 880,000 to the police last year on top, on top of the 6 million they were already getting, North Hampton can certainly give the Department of Community Care at least $880,000. This could be used to better serve our community and provide funding for a non-police mobile crisis response program that is peer-led as opposed to being staffed by social workers or clinicians, one that is directly accountable to communities most impacted by policing. This newly proposed budget of $423,000 does not adequately fund the Department of Community Care and to be clear, the policing review commission's report recommended funding the new Department of Community Care by at least 880,000 in the first year and ensuring that it is accountable to communities impacted by policing. $423,000 is a slap in the face and as Jose said, it's a farce to the review commission's time and labor spent. Any change is meaningless without accountability to people most impacted by policing and state violence. Currently, there is no agency in North Hampton under the direct leadership of people most impacted by policing. We are counting on City Council to press Mayor Narco to use his power to change the business as usual dynamic in municipal governance where overwhelmingly white, wealthier, and highly educated people make decisions on behalf of everyone else. It's not right. If Black Lives Matter, the North Hampton needs to truly commit to defunding the police with the goal of investing in meaningful, community-led safety strategies. I'd like to thank the councilors for your time tonight as always, and I'll close with this quote from Angela Davis. "Defunding the police is not simply about withdrawing funding for law enforcement and doing nothing else. And it appears as if this is the rather superficial understanding. It's about shifting public funds to new services and new institutions. It's about shifting funding to education, to housing, to recreation. All of these things help to create security and safety. It's about learning that safety safeguarded by violence is not really safety." And I would say that abolition is not primarily a negative strategy. It's not primarily about dismantling, getting rid of, but it's about re-envisioning. It's about building a new. All right. Thank you for your time.
Next is Carpenter's Local 336.
Hi, sorry. Sorry, my name is Lisa Clausen. I couldn't change my name on my Zoom. I live on Harrison Ave in Ward Two and I'm also an organizer with the carpenters union. And I'm on tonight to urge support for the resolution on wage theft as Margaret Sawyer also spoke on it. Wage theft is a huge problem in the construction industry and the State House is taking up legislation. It's been supported by our local senator and state rep as co-sponsors of the legislation. And I really appreciate councilors Skara, Jarrett, and Dwight for drafting this resolution and moving it forward. And thank you, council, for taking it up.
Thank you. Next is James Lowenthal.
Good evening. My name is James Lowenthal. I live at 181 Crescent Street and I'm here today to talk about an issue that affects everybody in the world, including us here in North Hampton. Last year, a major new report to the United Nations concluded what we already knew, that light pollution is a serious and growing problem. It's a problem for human health. It's a problem for all flora and fauna and it's growing at about 2% per year everywhere in the world, almost, which is about twice the rate of population growth. Also, a report last year found that light And also a report last year found that light pollution is disproportionately present in communities that have high demographics, high numbers of people of color and low income people. So it's also a social justice and an environmental justice issue. Some good news. In January of this year, the Northampton Energy and Sustainability Commission unanimously approved the five principles of responsible outdoor lighting, which basically say, if you're going to light things outside, they shouldn't, the light shouldn't be too bright. It shouldn't be too blue. It should go only where it's needed. It should go only when it's needed. And so it's great that the Energy and Sustainability Commission endorsed that. City council also approved the Northampton Climate Resiliency and Regeneration Plan, which includes those five principles. The bad news is there's currently a plan to rebuild the roundhouse parking lot. And part of that rebuilding plan includes very, very bright lights, much brighter than are currently there, brighter than, than even in Pulaski Park, which are, which are super bright and blue and have high glare. The new plan violates all the five principles of, of responsible outdoor lighting that the city has endorsed. And I urge you to simply make some, some simple changes that will drastically improve the plan and improve the quality of life and public health and public safety and the environment around the roundhouse parking lot, which is surrounded by low income housing as well as rich vibrant downtown setting. And I urge you also to consider establishing a committee that, or a subcommittee of an existing commission that could continue to look at issues like this going forward so that we don't have to keep playing whack a mole with every single project that comes up in the future. Thank you, and I look forward to working with you to help make that happen.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Latisha. Let me find you because I know you're having trouble raising your hand. Okay, Latisha, you should be able to unmute.
Thank, thank you, my friend. Um, my, my name is Latisha Wong. I live, I live in Northampton Ward 4 on, 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 on Pleasant Street. And I have an idea, I think, I agree what that guy said about the police and I think we need to, I think, I think they need to do some more training to like, so I know there's been a lot of stuff going on in, in, in the community, like for what happened to like George Forrest. So I think they need to like, and I agree, maybe we could do like $15 or, or $10 or, or do like a fundraising for, for the police department too. Cause I think, cause I know some places and stuff like that, but we should support them anyways. And it's good to, to, for them to, to, to get help. And it, and, and it's about loving in our community. So, yeah.
Is that all you wanted to say, Latisha?
Yes, Jill, I miss you. So.
Thank you so much. Good to see you. Thanks so much, Latisha. Okay, next we're going to Mary.
Did you call on me?
I did.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I just, I am a Northampton citizen. I've lived in this city for 35 years, a taxpayer here. And I am here to express my support for the Northampton Police Department. I do need cuts. In fact, I feel like their budget should be increased. I think that any cuts would, would, would be detrimental to the department in terms of resources and any, anything they need to modernize the, the department. Additionally, I think that cuts would really harm the diversity of the department because the newest hires would be the ones that would be eliminated if, if people had to be laid off and those, those are people of color and women. I know that Chief Casper is trying to hire more women to the, to the department. I have to say in the 35 years we've lived here, I've seen a, a decline and I think that it would really, I, I think that the atmosphere of Northampton would come crashing down if there were severe cuts to their, to the Northampton PD. I give them a lot of credit for the work they do. It's not easy, but they do it and I feel safer as a result. So with that, I thank everyone for listening and that's it.
Thank you. Next is Dana Goldblatt. You unmute?
Okay. Hi, my name is Dana Goldblatt. I'm a Northampton resident and I also work in Northampton. I have my own business. Um, I want to talk about the mayor's budget because it made me angry. The mayor in response to cut to a call from the community where meetings where 800 people showed up to defund the police, to dramatically cut its budget and redirect those resources to people who can more, less violently and less expensively provide those and other services. Responded by saying we needed a commission. They'd have to study it and the commission studied it and they said that we need the mayor, we need the police department to be cut and replaced with good people who can less violently and more efficiently provide those and additional services. And his response is to ignore it. And one of the reasons we didn't want a commission is because we said there's a long history going back to the twenties of using these commissions in exactly this way and then ignoring it. But we're all supposed to have faith in each other and we're all in community together and that wasn't going to happen in Northampton. And here we are. So instead of going through again, all the ways that police are detrimental to our community and suck up resources that could be spent building community. I want to just tell a quick story that I think illustrates both why we misunderstand what police do and why we don't need them anymore. So a cop stands for a constable on patrol. The idea was there was a constable, he walked around, he was on patrol and he could summons his friends with his radio if anyone needed help. Well, we don't need a radio anymore because we all have cell phones. So that's a little bit of an outdated service. And that was the idea that letting them basically brutalize people at will, it was worth it because if you needed help, they could come, right? There's somebody there to help you. That has become outdated. And here's the story I want to tell about why we cling to that. And we're throwing money at people now who literally stand between us and our fellow humans who can actually help. A woman posted on Facebook about having locked her keys in her Jeep. And she saw a constable on patrol. She summons the cop over and she said, can you help me? I locked my keys in a car and he summons the second constable on patrol and the two of them tried to get the keys out of the car. They couldn't. They are not locksmiths and they don't have the right tools. So then, uh, they finally after half an hour of this, apparently they got the idea to call Ernie's Towing. Guy shows up with a hook, sends it through the window and pulls out the keys. The woman responds by posting this on Facebook and saying, I really felt so taken care of by our police because they were there for me. Now, the man who actually had the know-how, the tools and the skills to help her, she never learned his name. He was just the nameless guy from Ernie's. And the police who showed up were completely ineffective and unable to provide any assistance at all. And yet she's still sort of conditioned to see that as a positive interaction in which police provide a service. And what they did was they obstructed the relationship, which was really between her and somebody with skills to help people when their keys are locked in a car. So what we're calling for is to get rid.
Finish your sentence.
To get rid of this middleman and concentrate on answering the question, how can we help people connect with the services they actually need quickly and efficiently in ways that builds the bond of community and lets them know who's really helping them so that we can help each other.
Thank you. Next is Lily Lombard.
Good evening. I'm Lily Lombard. I live on Monroe Street in Northampton. Very briefly, I'm part of a steering committee of a group called Northampton City Lights, who, who takes care to address issues around light pollution in our city and to, to protect all of those humans and non-humans affected by light pollution. And as James just spoke, we're, we're coming to you tonight with a very particular issue around the roundhouse parking lot lighting. But it really does raise the larger issue, as James suggested, of establishing a, an outdoor lighting committee in the city to get in front of these kinds of issues and transform our outdoor lighting so that it is as human and other creature friendly as it can be. And I, I want to speak, I know James is a very humble individual, but he is an internationally respected leader in this field. And we have those kinds of resources here in Northampton that can be used for, for our betterment. And I beseech the city council and the mayor's office to establish a lighting committee in Northampton. Lots of progressive towns have these sorts of things and it's long overdue and we won't have these kinds of race to fix mistakes when we, when we have a forward-thinking, well, well-researching committee at our disposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Myla.
Am I showing up? Yeah. Hi. Well, I, I totally, I'm Myla Cabotson. I live at 32 Ward Avenue. I totally support what Lily Lombard just said and James. I'm, I'm also on the steering committee of Northampton City Lights. And, and they both spoke very eloquently, but I, I do think it's really, it is really true that these projects keep coming up. And then we kind of, as James said, play whack a mole and try to catch up and try to improve them. And very often it's either too late or it's just, you know, it's seen as an annoyance because they're moving ahead and they've got their ideas. And I think that it's, this particular plan is going to produce too much light, too much glare, too much blue light, which we have found is, is a health issue and it's very close to the housing at McDonald House and 34 South Street. So those are places that deserve to have a good quality lighting for where they live, which means putting the light where it's needed, not having too much glare. Maintaining a night, kind of a peaceful nighttime environment instead of a sort of, it can actually feel kind of like a hell realm when you have too much light and too much glare and it's too, too bright and it's not, and it's cold and it's not, it should be a little bit warm. So there are lots of things that can be done that are not complicated that can, we could really improve the nighttime character of our, of our town. And we're going to have a chance to do that with this new downtown plan. But here with this particular project, we have, also have an opportunity to really create a beautiful nighttime environment for everyone, for the residents, for actually for the pollinators, for the people in downtown, enjoying downtown. So I really encourage you to create a lighting committee that can kind of keep its eye on the ball or keep its eye on the lighting and be there for you with expertise and knowledge and, and care. I also just want to end by saying I was very touched by some of the comments made by the people who want to reduce the funding for the police and the reasons why. So I just want you to know you were heard and it very much touched me what you said. So thank you to all for listening.
Thank you. Okay, next I'm going to go to Pat who is having trouble raising their hand. Pat Schuman. You unmute? All right. All right, here. Wait. Try one more time. Okay, I will come back in a bit and give it another shot to see if I can get you to unmute. Ed Olmstead.
Hello.
Hi.
Sorry. Yes, my name is Ed Olmstead. I live in Florence. I'm here to speak about the funding and the creation of the Community Care Department, which is in the mayor's budget. I believe that the department of creating a department of community care is an important step for Northampton. I personally think of it as a way to optimize approaches to community safety and our responsiveness as a city to residents and visitors. I can't, I, I know others will disagree with me on some points, but I appreciate, you know, the, the statements made about the need for, for decreasing or eliminating policing. I believe that the Department of Community Care is a positive step to achieve the change that Angela Davis is speaking about. I do have concern about the size of the budget. And I'm concerned that it's too small. I'm concerned about the lack of specificity of including people with lived experience with the police in specific advisory capacities. There's an option for that as I read it, but it's not specified. And I want to, the council voted on first reading to delete the specification in Resolution 21267 that the Department of Community Care be funded by at least 882,602 and instead use the words a meaningful investment that would assure viability. This concerns me that there's a lack of specificity here. I urge the council to consider what specifically will budgetarily and in other ways assure this viability. It's been the concern I know expressed on the, by the Northampton Policing Review Commission. And it remains in a way vague in my mind. I, the budget is also small compared to what will be needed going forward. Changeable funding sources such as grant funds will not be sufficient to be the main source of funding for this department. It needs to be an integral part of the city budget and I urge the council and the mayor to work on a roadmap for implementation with a vision on how the budget will evolve going forward to incorporate a successful and vibrant Department of Community Care as a permanent fixture of city services. And I believe that needs some more specificity as expressed by some of the other speakers here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Brian Wadsworth.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Even in everybody. Hope you're doing well. Yeah, my name is Ryan Wadsworth. I'm a father. I'm a math teacher. I live in Northampton Ward 3. So first off, I hope everybody's doing well. I hope your families are safe. I hope you're doing good. I support the wage theft resolution that a few speakers have mentioned, but I'm here tonight just like so many of us to echo once again, the call to reduce the harm caused by policing by reducing the NPD's budget. by reducing the NPD's budget and replacing it with the peer, with peer-led alternatives that have the skills and training that are appropriate to actually creating safety. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to read this little piece, and then I'll express more from the heart how I am seeing this. "Given the clear calls from the Black Lives Matter movement to defund and abolish the racist violent system that is policing, a budget that keeps racist policing intact is a racist and bad budget. The mayor has had a year to work on this, and has asked people of color in the Policing Review Commission to volunteer countless hours of their time and give him and the city council recommendations. He then ignored their two core recommendations. One is to fund the new Department of Community Care by at least $882,000, and to reduce the footprint of policing by moving responsibilities out of police. So this is unacceptable, and this is racism." Now, speaking as a white person, you know about racism, I think, you know, given the demographics of Northampton, given, you know, family histories, this is stuff that many of us have strong feelings about, and many of us maybe have a hard time kind of feeling are part of it. And so I just wanted to, you know, share this piece in terms of how conversations have gone with my own father and my own children. And that is about how difficult it is to step out of our context, avoid feeling, you know, defensiveness in order to genuinely see that, okay, well, just like 100 years ago, a lot happened that nowadays we can look back and say, wow, that's shocking and shameful. So too are we continuing in the footsteps of those who have committed genocide, those who held chattel slavery, chattel slaves. And so today, I don't think anybody on city council is disputing that racism exists. And yet nonetheless, our actions, nonetheless, what we have is a slap in the face to civil society. And it is a continuation of this racist status quo. And I just think that's so shocking and just disgusting, honestly. And so I apologize for bringing that emotion, because I think many people have great intentions.
That's time.
Okay. And so just to encourage city council to be bold, this is your time to create a legacy through which genuinely you will be proud to be able to tell your children and grandchildren about.
Thank you. Next is Darcy.
Hi, I'm Darcy Sweeney. I live at 31 Lexington Avenue in Florence. And I would like to urge the city council to keep the zero-lot line provision in the special permit section for developments of two of us. I think that requiring special permits gives heightened scrutiny to those kinds of developments and allows concerned citizens to investigate, find out what's in the works before a house development is a fait accompli. Requiring special permits seems like a reasonable, common sense request to citizens' concerns about houses that are to be placed 10 or 15 feet apart, which has happened in Bay State Village, and is certainly, certainly an anomaly in neighborhoods like ours. It's hard to understand what would be gained by allowing developers to avoid going through the special permitting process, and conversely, allowing developers to circumvent the process clearly doesn't benefit residents. I'd also like to speak very briefly about Northampton voting to opt out of pesticide spraying for mosquitoes. The Board of Health just voted unanimously to opt out, which is wonderful. There's so many reasons not to spray pesticides, either from trucks or aerially. Research has shown that spraying is not effective. It endangers vulnerable humans. It is, the cure is much worse than the disease in terms of people being made sick. Children are especially susceptible to pesticides. And of course, it poisons insects, not just mosquitoes, but all sorts of insects that we depend on, pollinators especially. We are in the midst of what is quite commonly referred to now as an insect apocalypse. Insects have declined precipitously in the past 50 or so years, and it's quite terrifying what's happening to the environment overall, largely because of pesticides. Northampton should institute robust, ecologically sound mosquito control measures now, such as monitoring for mosquito larvae, reducing mosquito breeding habitat, public education about personal protective measures, and so on, rather than having to spray at the end of the summer. So I urge the council to vote to opt out of mosquito spraying. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Next is Ry.
Hello, my name is Ry Buckley. I live in Ward 3. Usually, I prepare my comments ahead by writing them down. I did not tonight, so let's hope for the best. I've been looking over the budget the last couple days, and I've been making graphs, because I'm a visual person. And I've been looking at the visual representation of where we're putting our money. And I have some graphs from last year that represent how we spent our money last year. And they're the exact same. They're visually identical. After an entire year of community members, the members of the Policing Review Commission, the members of this city council, putting, you know, immeasurable amounts of time into finding ways that we can use our money and our governmental system to start actually creating real safety for the people in our community, this year's budget changed nothing. And that makes me really, really disappointed, really angry. I'm hearing that a lot of other people in the community feel the same way. You know, I know, I suspect, you know, I don't know. I know some of you on the council may also feel the same way, because I know you all have put tons and tons of time into thinking about these issues, working on these issues, trying to create change on these issues. And I know that this budget, which does nothing, you know, disrespect the time you put in as much as it puts, disrespects the time, you know, everyone else in our community has put in. And this is, this especially makes me remember all the times in which people in the community were like, commissions are historically tactics to delay and prevent change and are white supremacist tool. And many, many people on the council were like, no, this, this isn't what we're doing. We are really creating this commission because we mean to figure out what needs to happen, and we mean to do it. And I believe you. I still believe you. But this budget proposed by the mayor represents no change. It represents that everyone's time was channeled into this official commission, this official capacity, and nothing is being done to make the people I care about and the people in our community safer. I still believe you on the council, and I just really, I really want you to do everything you have in your power over the next couple weeks, month, whatever, to make good on that promise and make sure all of this work wasn't wasted. And just to make sure that the people in our community are safer this year than last year. That's, that's what we want. And the way we do that is we fund the Department of Community Care such that it can actually begin providing services and making people safer as soon as possible. We've heard from experts and we've seen from other cities all over the, thank you, all over the country, that these departments can be created quickly, a year, two years. Let's do it. Let's get the money away from the police so they stop harming people. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me... Pat, do you want to try and unmute? Pat Schuman? Thought I saw you unmuted for a second. Pat Schuman tried to unmute? There we go.
Hi there. Finally. I really wasn't gonna say too much. But I'm confused to why concerned about the policing. I don't know what's happened here. In Northampton, I live in Florence. I live in Bay State. I know what's happening around here. We're getting more houses. But as far as any police problem, you know, in Northampton, I don't know. I know there's a lot, you know, in different areas of the United States, but maybe I am ignorant on that. If someone could let me know about that. But I think that we do need our police, and I do believe that we need, they need some, new education in various areas as far as social interactions, you know. Put the police where they need to be, and put the, you know, don't send them into, you know, a place where they don't need to be, you know, that would cause a little bit more distress. But anyway, that's all I just really wanted to say. I thank you for all your care and your work.
Thank you. Next is Toward Harmony.
Hi there. I'm Catherine Comodar, actually. My work. I live in Bay State. Thank you to the city council for allowing us to speak. I'm speaking with regards to the zero-lot line amendments. "When New Way Homes began erecting the compound at 170 Federal Street, my alarmed neighbors and I were sure that this rogue developer had run amok with some loopholes in the zoning regulations, and that once this was brought to the city's attention, they would quickly recognize a problem existed and begin looking at ways to adjust the regulations that allowed it. We knew that our city wanted to be on the cutting edge of smart growth, climate resilience, and providing affordable housing, and, as stated in the Sustainable Northampton Comprehensive Plan, to foster the unique history, character, and function of its neighborhoods. We were sure the city would see the New Way Homes development as inconsistent with its goals and its values. We had discovered heartbreakingly that we were wrong. The city seems to be bending over backward to promote commercial development of as many large luxury homes on the smallest lots as possible, and at a great cost to the environment, affordable and equitable housing, and the history and character of our neighborhoods, and also the trust of the residents of our city. Why? The criteria in the Table of Uses for the URB District says, "For new buildings, setbacks, scale, and massing should fit within the block face." And these words are beside a graphic that says "doesn't fit", portraying houses that look similarly out of scale to the surrounding neighbors as those at 170 Federal Street. It seems that these words are just for show because no one is evaluating whether or not they are being followed. No one is evaluating how many trees are being lost. No one is evaluating how many small, more affordable houses are being demolished as part of the zero-lot line. The dots aren't lining up. What the city says it values and what the city is promoting on the ground isn't lining up. If revenue shortfall is the reason for this policy, I wish we could just say so. Let's call a spade a spade. Then we can come together and deal with this problem honestly and directly for what it is. But I do not believe that calling this type of building green or sustainable or equitable is honest or accurate. If the city wants to safeguard its own standards, it should grant zero-lot line by special permit only, a process that allows both the city and the neighbors to evaluate such development and its costs to the environment, streetscape, and availability of affordable housing on a case-by-case basis. Zero-lot line should be an exception to the normal zoning standards. Exceptions to normal zoning standards should not be given by right to anyone. There must be clear benefits to the neighborhood and to the city for such exceptions. By requiring a special permit, the city can follow the Section C guidelines there, which require them to evaluate whether or not, and this is a quote, "the requested use will promote a harmonious relationship of structures and open spaces to the natural landscape, existing buildings, and other community assets in the area."
That's time. If you could just finish your sentence.
I was just gonna say, please consider granting special permit zero-lot line so that our values and our regulations can line up. Thanks.
Next is Victor S.
Hi, my name is Victor. I work in Northampton. I was looking at some of the review board statistics, and I noticed that mental health calls only accounted for 0.015% of police interactions in 2020. That's 453 out of 29,078. And in 2019, it was even less with 443 out of 40,000 calls. So I just have some questions that I think need to be answered by the city council in regards to this commission. If you choose to defund NPD and someone who should have received an expedient public safety response is severely injured and dies, are you going to be liable for that? Is the city prepared to face litigation when the inevitable happens? Are you prepared for the NPD to lose its accreditation, meaning less training grants for officers and less educated police force? Have you actually studied or considered the negative effects in response time for police services and emergencies? Have you looked into any other areas of the city's budget that funds, that the Department of Community Care could be drawn from other than the police department? Have you reached out to other established social worker agencies and asked why, why they work with the police and their experience with NPD officers? Have you polled city residents as to their feelings of a drastically reduced police force? This does not mean public hearing comments, but an actual questionnaire given to a registered voters in Northampton. Will you back up, or who will back up peer responders if they become in danger and cannot handle a situation alone? Will the PD be tracking the number of times the Department of Community Care calls them for assistance or backup? These need to be documented to gauge whether or not the department is successful. What kind of credentials must a responder with the Department of Community Care obtain to be certified? Is there any certification process at all? What happens when a responder from the Department of Community Care needs to make entry into someone's home who is unwilling to talk to them and is threatening to harm themselves? Will the Department of Community Care respond to persons in crisis who are armed with a weapon, have injured someone else, flee the scene, or is any other way uncooperative with their efforts? Is it fiscally responsible to defund the department, to defund a department by 10 to 50% to create another that will, at best, handle .01 of its workload? Then rely on that the funded department to respond to the same calls anyway? That's like paying your mortgage with a home equity loan. What is, what is the response of Mr. Paul's accurate assessment of the bias nature of the Police Review Commission's report as no officers were consulted other than the chief, and even then extremely minimally? What do all the residents in Northampton have to say about their tax dollars leaving their police department to fund an experimental new department that will only benefit residents in isolated police response? Have you made any legitimate attempts to ask them?
That's time. Before you go, could you please state your city or town of residence?
East Hampton.
Thank you. Next, the name is NPD spouse.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm logging on tonight, not as a resident of Northampton, but as the spouse of the Northampton officer. "As you consider next steps in altering the department's budget and role in the community, I felt it imperative to speak to you about my experiences this past year. The perspectives and experiences of the officers who serve your city, as well as their families, have been sadly lacking from these conversations. My officer has served the city of Northampton with integrity for many years and does so with pride. He has a strong sense of duty and is deeply committed to the work and helping others. Last year on May 25th, we watched the death of George Floyd in horror, along with the rest of the world. There are no words to describe how that felt for any of us. My officer was not only deeply saddened, but extremely angry that an officer would ever commit such an egregious act. While we shared in the pain of what followed, when we heard that there was going to be a protest in Northampton, we weren't worried. We felt confident that community members wanted to show their solidarity, but also understood the necessary nuance. A while into the march, about 300 local attendants began to turn the event into something else entirely. They ripped down the flag outside of the department and carried it as a trophy before setting it on fire in front of City Hall, and began picking up rocks and throwing them at the officers who were unprotected in just their normal uniforms. The other protesters fled and quickly left the area. Eventually..." Eventually, they all made it back to the station and were forced to put on riot gear as the community members continued to assault them with rocks. Still not wanting a violent negative interaction, they retreated again into the department itself. At that point, the rioters smashed the window into it with a garbage can, graffiti the building, damaged cruisers, and even attempted to break into the department itself. That night when my officer came home, I was relieved, but there was a sinking feeling along with that relief. I was afraid. Throughout the past year, what has stood out to me the most is that not a single question was asked. Not one question about our city or state's policies, procedures, laws, or our personal perspective and values. I was heartbroken to realize that nuance, healing, and growth through varied perspectives was of no interest. Instead, I was bombarded with hate, day in and day out. Not knowing what else to do, I watched silently from the sidelines. I watched as the protests continued and my fear and anxiety rose time after time. I watched as they came to your homes, members of the council, and dismissed your concerns that it scared your children. I watched as they created an entire review committee, yet not one member or city councillor has done a ride-along or interviewed an actual patrol officer. I watched as the statistical data showing there was no pattern of discrimination in Northampton was disregarded. I watched as the only Black member of the council was asked to recuse himself from this discussion because of his profession as a parole officer, an issue that only arose, I might add, after he initially voted no to defunding. I watched as you recklessly defunded the department by 10%, but had no alternative services in place and further hindered the department's ability to continue to provide the training that sets them apart. I watched as personal friends and my officer's colleagues of diverse backgrounds and qualifications fled your city at unprecedented rates to the failure of the city council to address these important issues responsibly. I watched as others in the community continued to be silenced for fear of coming forward in support of their department. Despite all this, I am hopeful that reason and nuanced truth will prevail. I want to thank Nandi Paul for his hope and speaking truths of power. Just remember that part of your privilege is having the police department you have and do not let self-righteousness get in the way of self-reflection. Thank you.
Before you mute, can you please state your name and city or town of residence?
For security purposes, I don't feel comfortable giving my name, but I will say that I live in Westfield.
Next, I'm gonna go to someone else who's having trouble raising their hand. Let me find them. Wannavra? I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Hello, my name is Gwen and I live here in Northampton. And, you know, I mean, there's been a lot about that, but first, I just want to say that I'm in a very good mood right now because we just are hoping that, you know, we've just got a unanimous mosquito opting out recommendation, so hopefully everyone will agree with that. I also want to comment about the lighting in the city and how that has an impact on me and also like where I grow my food, which is in my neighborhood where I live, which is public housing, and how that has a huge impact to have a telephone pole and a bright light blasting into the house every night and sometimes very high-pitched and buzzing noises and then tinnitus and things like that that really kind of drive me insane. So it would be nice if we could have something like a light team or something like that in Northampton. I think that's a great idea, which I wasn't expecting to come up. And then I also want to just quickly share about how I feel about the police and I live in public housing, which is where all the bad people live. And, and I want to talk about it and it's gonna start with my own personal experience because I didn't grow up in Northampton. And I grew up in a very white, blue-collar, factory worker, gone, white, comfortable community in, in Middlesex County. And, and I grew up there. It was originally an agricultural town. And when my sister and I were 12, we were severely abused by our dad and left bleeding. And I called 911 and the cop came and he was a friend of my dad's and he told us that we probably deserved it. So, you know, that was just kind of the tip of the iceberg after a lot of other things that had gone on that were overlooked by teachers, that were overlooked by people who knew what was going on, but they were afraid of my powerful father. And, and I'm very familiar with the blue wall. I'm very, very familiar with that because it's not just a blue wall, it's a supreme white wall. And so, and it doesn't just discriminate against Black people, it also discriminates if it's And most of the time, it is women and Black people and children who are victimized. Numerous times where I went to, to get help from police and I was told that it was not in their jurisdiction or they couldn't do anything about it.
That was, so could you please finish your sentence?
Sure. So I just want to say that I haven't had this kind of experience in Northampton. I've had a very supportive experience in Northampton with the police, but certainly there are still social issues that might require the police at times. And I'd also just want to say one last thing.
Very quickly.
Social programming is equally important, equally important. So, all of it.
Thank you. Okay, next, it just says call in user one.
Jane Doe, resident and a victim of sexual assault. I'm currently in a safe location regarding Resolution 21.265 and the mayor's proposed allocation of $423,955 to create the department. I oppose both for multiple reasons. As a survivor of rape, I want you councillors all to know that the Northampton Police Department saved my life. When I reported the rape to the department, the officer was calm and respectful, trauma-informed and victim-centered. I felt completely reassured and safe in his presence. Honestly, it was the first time that I felt like I could breathe. He provided me with information regarding an emergency abuse prevention order and the way that he interacted with me that night saved my life then and in the days and months ahead. It was the strength of that officer that I would take with me into the initial court hearing, the 10-day hearing where I first faced my assailant after reporting the crime and the subsequent 209A extension hearings. And when he violated the restraining order, the police would respond and save my life. Those of us with restraining orders need the police to protect us every single day. For me as a survivor, safety is refunding the department budget to its previous levels so that the department can be returned to full capacity. Cuts to the department directly threaten my life. Safety for me is hiring the 10 officers that have been lost so that response times are not further reduced and I don't get killed. Allocating $424,000 to create a Department of Community Care puts my life in jeopardy. The statements and exclusionary actions taken by the commission have been extremely re-traumatizing to me and have made me feel extremely unsafe. I'm grateful to councillor Thorpe and Nandi Paul for their reasoned, objective thoughts and actions. After I gave testimony to the commission, it gave domestic violence and serious crimes the short shrift. No victim testimony was sought, no DV agencies were included, there was an increased incidence of domestic violence during the pandemic that was not assessed or explored. Technological difficulties adversely affected the online submission form that had only gone live March 3rd. There were no protocols for securing testimony from victims at all. Open meeting laws were violated repeatedly. The commission mischaracterized the Northampton Police Department responses to sexual assault, which was insulting and traumatizing to me as a victim. The sections on domestic violence in the preliminary and planning report focused on improving the conditions for the abuser and the batterer. There were references to how, excuse me?
Sorry, that is three minutes. Could you finish?
I guess it is. I'm sorry, I can't.
Next is Barrett Do Now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Barrett Do Now. I am the unit council chair of the Pioneer Valley News Guild. I am speaking in my capacity as a union official. I am here today to support the second reading of the resolution in favor of, in favor of our union's contract campaign with our company and also to use this platform to give people an update on how things have been going with negotiations and what folks should be doing moving forward. Unfortunately, we did meet with the company this week and I am happy to say that there was some movements and progress, which is encouraging. And we are hopeful that we can carry that momentum into another, into our next bargaining meeting with them, which is going to be on June 15th. That being said, rubber has not hit the road yet in terms of both wages and jurisdiction with this new bargaining team that the company has, which includes an out-of-town lawyer. So although there has been some movement, you know, the, we still don't know what the full shape of this is. And the only way that we feel that we can get a fair contract and job security and fair wages for our people at the Daily Hampshire Gazette is if we continue to have the support and solidarity of the community. So I definitely urge everyone to pay attention to what's happening, to follow Pioneer Valley News Guild on social media, to pay attention to our actions. And also, I would like to say in encouraging news, it looks like we are going to be getting one of our members back on rehire. So we will be announcing that very shortly, but it looks like that's going to be happening, I can wood. So that is something that we are very anticipating and we thank the company for that and we are hoping to see again more movement. So again, things are going a little better than when we previously talked to you all, but again, the only way things continue to go better is to have the solidarity from our community and we urge the passage of this resolution on second reading. Thank you.
Next is Jamila Gore.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jamila Gore. I live in Ward 2 in Northampton. I am running for city council at large. I want to ditto what Margaret from the Pioneer Valley Worker Center said and also what Lily Lombard and James said about lighting. I 1,000% support the wage theft resolution. I support the zoning initiatives that the city council has put forth for affordable housing. I think that this budget, it doesn't seem to incorporate the values that I'm hearing in public comment. And I assume that a budget reflects the values of a city and the people that live in it. There's a lot of questions, so I would love if you guys could have a public hearing. I don't know if you could publicize when that is the public hearing about the budget, maybe make the process more transparent to the public so there's not all this like confusion about what money goes where and, you know, and I think that, you know, the administration has done a good job of getting us to a fiscally good place. However, how are we going to use that to help the community and to, you know, kind of steer that in the direction of the needs of the community instead of just trying to get a AAA, you know, bond rating, which is completely arbitrary to, you know, what's important to the people who live here? So I really hope that there's more discussion as far as budgets are concerned in the next, when the next mayor comes or even with this mayor, because it's just, it just seems like there's a lot of misunderstanding and I think that could be prevented if there's more public interaction with it. So.
Bill Ryan is next.
Hello, I'm Bill Ryan. I live in Florence, Bay State area, and I submitted written, a written image to all the council members today, so I hope you get a chance to look at that vis-à-vis the Zero Lot Line change. I tried to encapsulate what really happens when you change the lot line in a, in a area. For example, if you take the, the lot line from 15 feet, which is the standard in Bay State, and you move it to zero feet, what happens is the house that can be built there is 15 feet wider. So rather than a house that takes up, say, in a small 50-foot lot, that takes up only a third of the lot, now that house is gonna take up about two-thirds of the lot. So, and this happens, the bigger the lot, the more, the more space it takes up. So, so when you're thinking about decreasing the lot lines, you have to realize that the houses are gonna be bigger. Is that really what we want across the board with these new standards that are being offered? The other question about it is moving it out of a special permit, the, there are provisions for two-family and three-family houses to be able to use Zero Lot Line and there's no accounting for that in the current URB tables. And so I think until this really gets thought through, it should stay in special permits where it currently is and it all should be thought through a little more carefully before any changes are made. So, thank you very much. I, I wish you well in your deliberations this evening.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go to Sandra. I know that you're struggling to raise your hand. Here you are. You should be able to unmute.
Great, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that's, there's a huge airplane overhead, so I'll just speak up a little louder.
Me too.
I am Sandy Mandell. I live on Liberty Street in the Bay State community and I'm also here, I don't need to repeat all the good arguments that have been happening in terms of preserving the, keeping the Zero Lot Lines under special permit. This, if this is done, it preserves the right of case-by-case consideration by the city and some semblance of community control and input. And anything other than that, we are watching within our community what's happening now and believe that that will, that if you remove the Zero Lot Line from special permit, that that will increase the type of predatory development that feels like it's happening in our community now. So please keep the Zero Lot Lines under special permit. Thank you very much.
I think I've gone to everyone who couldn't raise their hand. If you're still having trouble raising your hand and I haven't called on you, just put it in the chat again, but I think I, I found everyone there. Next is Ashwin Ravi Kumar.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ashwin Ravi Kumar and I live in Amherst and spend a lot of time in Northampton. I am here to speak about the mayor's budget proposal. And the mayor's budget proposal creates a Department of Community Care, but simply doesn't fund it enough to allow it to thrive, to really develop the capacity to take care of everyone in Northampton. I also want to address some of the comments that have been made expressing fear and concern about what will happen if we really take the spirit of the Movement for Black Lives seriously and divest from policing to invest in alternative services. Fundamentally, we need to remember that the evidence is in, that police do not keep us safe. It's undeniable that some folks do feel safer with police, but it's equally undeniable and not debatable that policing causes tremendous racialized harm. And the positive experiences that white folks have with cops are simply not germane to the conversation about how to reduce the footprint of policing to end racist policing. So I hope that the councillors will be bold and think about that as they move forward with the budget. We need to cut the police budget more to, to follow the recommendations of the Policing Review Commission. It suggested creating a Department of Community Care, but it also crucially suggested taking key functions, traffic stops, wellness checks, animal control, out of the police. Notably, that's not any of the stuff that people on this call have been talking about or praising the cops for because cops don't really do what people think they do. because cops don't really do what people think they do. They don't actually spend their time dealing with the types of issues that people are talking about today. And so we can reduce the overall impact that police have on our community by following those recommendations and by allowing budget to follow those functions, funds to follow functions, another thing that the report suggests. So a year, almost a year after the murder of George Floyd, the budget that the mayor has released is not worthy of our moral commitments to anti-racism or our aspirations to have alternatives in place. And I urge the council to demand more funding for the Department of Community Care, to deploy peer-led, non-coercive responses for folks that need it, and also to move those functions out of the police and demonstrate a pathway to making those changes now, that we honor the lives of black folks and other folks who have been killed by police, that we uplift those that are harmed by police in our communities on a daily basis by putting our budgetary commitments where our values truly lie. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jackie Balance.
There. Thank you. Good evening, council. You all know me. I'm Jackie Balance from Ward Five. Bay State Village people have already bombarded council at and since the Legislative Matters Meeting about the zero lot line developments, because we set, feel such a sense of urgency about the developments that are going on here. That's developments plural. Three are underway, and there are other new way properties that had no plans on file yet. So the bombardment counselors have suffered from us, and I am sorry about that, is from the deep desperation we feel. Many of us do not sleep well because of the developments going up and the trees coming down all around us. We know that we have presented many good and logical arguments to make these developments, as described in Section 1014, subject to special permit provisions. I want to return to some of the first issues we raised with the city back in November, along with serious affordability and related equity issues and the failure to meet the doesn't-fit-design criteria from the use tables. This builder has also demonstrated little consciousness of the carbon impact of his methods and materials. He might meet every minimum requirement of the building code, but not one iota more. And to date, none of the new way roofs are even oriented for solar. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 31, Section 81D, allows the city to apply the principles of our resilience and regeneration plan very specifically to the special permit process. Did you know that the special permit section is the only place in the code where our sustainability plan actually has teeth already? You can finally jumpstart the resilience and regeneration plan tonight by putting zero lot line developments, as defined in 1014, under special permit review. Say no to these confusing and complicated and unnecessary revisions. The proposed code revisions are useless at best and possibly harmful. We don't really need to juggle setbacks. Just put these developments under special permit status, and we can really start to guide a chunk of the new housing developments in our city towards meeting our goal of being net zero by, carbon net zero by 2050. Require a special permit for zero lot line developments, and then you will be more than a climate resolution council. You can be a climate action council. Go, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Lemmy.
Hi, I'm Lemmy. I live in Ward One. So to quote the mayor in the budget, he says in his opening statement about it, "As North Hampton embarks on a similar path towards creating a civilian response to mental health and drug use crises, houselessness and other issues needing community care," quote unquote, "as well as working on other long-term recommendations of the NPRC, I'm hopeful that we can do so with a spirit of shared purpose and collaboration among all stakeholders and across all study departments, including Chief Casper and the dedicated women and men of the North Hampton Police Department." And I have to ask, out of all the stakeholders of community care in our community, the one stakeholder he has to name by name in the introduction of his budget is the police department. Mayor Narcoitz, I ask you, why was this the stakeholder, the most important stakeholder to uplift in your final budget as mayor? In what ways does the stake of the police department align with your stake in the community? Leading with naming the police department as a stakeholder does not bode well for how this new department will go. The community has been pushing so hard to advocate for our values of caring for one another to be a cornerstone of safety in our community, rather than punishment and brutality. And we time and time again try to center white, middle-class, upper-middle-class people who have for generations benefited from the frame of safety and financial security being built on a foundation of anti-black violence. I asked the mayor, the city council, and our residents to think, what comes up for us when we find ourselves uplifting the North Hampton Police Department as a stakeholder in the conversation about safety? Why is de-centering and even defunding them so concerning? What haunting themes of history are reflected in uplifting their stake when they ticket unhoused neighbors downtown at the request of business owners? What haunting themes of history are reflected in their stake in our community when they police our borders, our city's borders by targeting black and brown folks just trying to swim or drive in our town? Let's revisit the mayor's description of the North Hampton Police Department as stakeholders. What is their stake? Who is their stake of criminalization aligned with? Why is critiquing and questioning their stake in our community considered an assassination of their character? Policing stake in my community is aligned with the stakes of people like my parents, my grandparents, and countless of my ancestors before them. The stake of the North Hampton Police reflects white supremacist values, valuing law and order above support and connection, valuing capital at the price of our humanity, generation after generation. Defunding police is but a small interruption to our legacy as white people. And the mayor's budget does nothing to interrupt our legacy as it continues to fund the mechanism that upholds the war on drugs and modern slavery through mass incarceration. Community care means nothing without meaningfully defunding police. Just creating more stakeholders in the community care with the new department without uprooting the white supremacist stake we have in criminalization is not in line with the Police Review Commission's report. I hope we can divest in our stake from, in criminalization by divesting from the stake of the North Hampton Police and not listing them as the most important stakeholder in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. RB.
Hi, I'm Robert. I live in North Hampton, Ward Three. I'm speaking tonight to support and echo others who've asked to cut the police budget by 50% and to use that money to invest in community care. At least 882,000 going to the department, as stated in the recommendations of the mayor's commission. I think that, for example, that money could go towards a mobile crisis response team. I see that New York City has already done a pilot, and they're permanently shifting tens of thousands of mental health-related calls to non-police responses. So I think if New York can do it in one year, North Hampton certainly is capable. But I also tonight wanted to speak about a recent training that the police department enrolled in called the Active Bystander Chip for Law Enforcement or ABLE Training, which according to their website aims to prevent misconduct, avoid police mistakes, and promote officer health and wellness by essentially creating a culture where police officers have the freedom to intervene when their fellow officers are doing things like using excessive force or breaking department policy. And as far as I can understand, this training came to be because 10 concerned citizens, most of them who are white, and some of them who even have a personal stake in the research at UMass that has led to the development of ABLE training, wrote an email to city councilors and the mayor and Chief Casper. This is all happening during the work of the Policing Review Commission. It feels a little premature to be supporting such a training, which the mayor wrote a letter of recommendation for the application materials before the work of the commission was done. Chief Casper also said that in order to make this training happen in the department, that we also need to ensure we have training, overtime funding, to support the classes internally. Although the initial training is free, training in the entire department can become expensive quickly and is a requirement for enrollment in the training. Two officers have already done the so-called free portion of the training and received overtime pay for their hours spent on that training. And mostly, I, you know, I definitely do not support this training. It definitely is premature to enroll in such a training. But also, over the past hundred-plus years, we have seen that training and reform don't work. And there's a pretty concrete example I can give here in North Hampton that really makes me question why anyone would think that this kind of training would be effective. And that is several of the lawsuits that have been brought against and by Alan Borowski. All right, that's the time. I just want to say that he's cost our city a lot of money, and whether or not officers intervene, the police union is going to defend them. All right, defend the police.
Next is Deborah Berkowitz.
Hi, thank you, everybody. My name is Deborah Berkowitz. I live in Bay State Village. I too am being heard, not for the first time and not for the last time, because I still believe very strongly in what we're saying. The, the zero lot lines, I'm speaking against the change, the amendment, especially with the current amendments, just allow bigger houses on smaller lots. It's been said, one of the things we've been told is that it will allow for more flexibility to protect trees. At 57 Warner, where there's currently a zero lot line development, half of the root of at least 100-year-old sugar maple, half of the root system was killed in building the house. And yesterday, the half of the tree was radically limbed. So while it won't die immediately, it will die directly from this DLL development, as will multiple trees up to 150 years old at the development that's going to occur on Riverside Drive. And the sapling replacement, in terms of, you know, shade, carbon sequestration, beauty, is 100 years out. I have a quote from Carolyn Mish, that the zoning modifications that were adopted by city council in 2012 to 13 did result in changes to lot sizes. This was done purposely to allow opportunities for new lots to be created from some of the larger lots, knowing that a sprinkling of new lots within neighborhoods would allow for new housing to be built organically. They reflected the building patterns in neighborhoods over time. I will say that as far as I can see, with more than a dozen identical houses in the pipeline in Bay State Village, many of them with zero lot lines, there's nothing organic that's happening here. Organic suggests something that it appears as though it's always been there with seamless transition to what already exists. We don't have this. We haven't had a precedent. And we're, we're appealing to the city council to, to say, listen to us, help us. The, she, she also said that zoning is of course neutral on the entity who's creating a project. Since once built, these can last for centuries. And what we are saying is the changes that, that the city council and city planning department is responsible for, those changes are going to last for centuries. The trees that are getting cut down, the lots that are getting built in, the houses that are being torn down, the size of the houses, and we keep being told that, that there's nothing that can be done, that it's not the right regulation that we're talking to, or the right body, or the right issue. But tonight, there is actually something that you can do, which is to not make these amendments to the zero lot line that's going to allow for even closer housing, even bigger housing. And let's actually, let's look at the zero lot line as a place where we, we can actually come together and talk about what we were being promised for our neighborhoods. Carolyn said that what is allowed, and what we should be coming to our city councilors for, is, quote, "to address the types, location, lot sizes, unit numbers, aesthetics, landscaping, tree protection, removal, et cetera." So this, thank you. So stopping with the zero lot line changes until we can move forward with resident input on what would be work better is what I am requesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gina.
Hi, my name is Gina. I use she/her pronouns. I'm from Montague. I am so angry. It's hard to fully express how I feel at the moment. The mayor of North Hampton has absolutely screwed us over. It seems to him that the unpaid work of the bipartisan voices of the commission was a distraction to continue the white supremacist, quote, "democracy," end quote, that we have here in North Hampton. So we are here because policing is harming the community. And we are here because policing is the legacy of slavery, to police the black body, the poor body, the homeless body, the female body, the disabled body, et cetera. So if you have said tonight that you have felt safe with the NPD, you are not listening to your community. Oftentimes, safety from crime is safety from people different than you. If you fail to listen to your black and brown community, you are selfish and you are ignorant. You are racist, because caring for your race and your class only is an absolutely horrid way to live. I don't know how you can go on like that. Any type of safety you have felt from the police department can also be provided by the Department of Community Care. I wanted to share a personal story of my very first experience with the North Hampton Police Department, and it was one of the scariest days of my life. I have a video on my phone where you can hear the transition from our peaceful chants to someone screaming "tear gas." We all start running in the other direction. It was pepper spray, but even that fear of tear gas should not exist. Does this sound like safety to you? That video show, that video shows the fear that we feel when police officers are using weapons of murder and harm to control our right to protest. We are literally screaming for survival. Your officers who protect and serve are actually killing and abusing people? Yes, there is an issue in North Hampton. For example, heavily, heavy brutalization of black and brown houseless people. How the hell do you live like that? The reason I am so sharing this is to say that the police do not protect the North Hampton community, homeless populations, people struggling with mental illness, poverty, and the black and indigenous people of color. That day, I just mentioned, for the first time as a young adult with absolutely no training, I spent nearly an hour comforting a member of the North Hampton community suffering with pepper spray in his eyes. I was very afraid that they would go blind due to the close contact with the spray, because that can happen. That is not community safety. I'm sorry. So in the end, I absolutely support defunding the police by 50%, leading to the eventual abolition of NPD and nationwide policing. What are you going to do, council, to support your bipartisan neighbors? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sean Official.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So I first want, my name is Sean Official. I live in Chesterfield Village in Leeds, Ward Seven. And I first just want to put one plug in for the recognition and appreciation that the Department of Community Care is in the budget. But as many said before me, I think it is, doesn't quite fit the commission's report. And I am very concerned that there is no funding for peer-led contributions to the creation of the department, and that was a big part of the report as well. And I'm also concerned about other avenues to be explored regarding community care. However, today, I'm actually coming to speak about the upcoming swimming season in the Mill River and some of the parking ordinances that I see later on in the, in the agenda for today. I do want to just remind fellow councilors of the statement from Concerned Residents of Lead from last summer. And I just want to read a couple of points, just to remind you the divisiveness and the problems that need to be solved around the Mill River. So we do all identify the problems of trash along the riverfront, illegal fires in the wooded area, human waste deposit, excessive alcohol, excessive noise, and abundance of cars. However, these concerns have led to some responses that are problematic. It leads to becoming an uncomfortable place for people that are, that is our race and class base impact of those that visit the river. There's growing restrictions of public use spaces and increased reliance of police to solve community problems. And NPD was used as a private detail for charred park property along the river last summer, and that should not be allowed. And no budget should pay for North Hampton Police to do any private detail among our cities. That's one way to cut the budget. This action that has been taken is really concerning. And after speaking to residents of Um, this a, action um that has been taken is really concerning and after speaking to residents of Lead. Um, it is clear and as a resident, there is a problem to be solved and. It is my impression that the council has not put enough ordinances in place to. Resolve this issue because begins, I see the only issue on the table is the parking ordinances, which I agree with grocery, but not. Um, mean street in Leeds. Um, we need to focus on short-term action plan and I'm gonna not spend time in the long terms. But um, I don't agree with the parking restrictions and I think there should be. Uh, a special forum for Leeds residents, uh, community debate on the matter because it impacts all of us. Uh, there should be immediate cessation of any routine policing for enforcement. Um, on the private property on the river. Um, there should be porta potties here before the summer and there should be dumpsters before the summer. Um, I don't think there's enough time to have a lot of residents um interact with their problems. Uh, but we do have a lot of voices, both from the lead civic association as well as other concerned. Uh, Black Lives Matter activists that have a lot to say and I think a community forum is in place. Thank you.
Next is Marita Wallace.
Hi, um, I'm a resident of Amherst, but I work at Ja- Jonathan Kennedy Middle School. And I, um, I've been listening tonight and hemming and hawing whether or not I was going to say anything, but you know, what I've heard. Really is frustrating for me as a black woman. Um, and I say that because I've heard people say, well, everything is fine. You know, nothing, this doesn't happen in, in Northampton. And I grew up in Amherst and it happens here. So it happens everywhere and it's frustrating and. It makes me very angry that people can't realize that or keep their rose-colored glasses on or what have you. And I, I have to say, I'm, I'm tired of being gaslit. Um, by people who really think that this stuff doesn't happen or they don't see it or it's not what have you. But I walk around in my black skin every single day. I can't take it off. It is not a uniform. It is how I live. And when people who look like me are telling you, there is a problem, there is a problem. And I'm sorry that some of that offends people, but it is there. We walk into it every day and it is frightening. For people who look like me. So I have to say, a lot of people are not ever going to feel that fear. Or understand what it's like to feel that fear every single day. And so I feel like we are having this meeting again about defunding a police department that has had racial issues. Had them in the past and had them in the present and having a way to. Help people without. Calling the police is so very important because I have to tell you, as a black woman, I live in Amherst. I'm afraid to call the cops because I'm afraid that they might shoot me. And look at me as a black person instead of one who is trying to rectify a situation. And it is frustrating and it makes me so angry as a black woman that all the stuff that has happened in the continental U, United States of America. Over the last ten years with black and brown people that we're still trying to convince people that this happens. And I don't care if it happens twenty miles from there, hapken, ha- hap- happens and Hopkins, uh, Hopdinkin. And I, uh, with a sixteen-year-old girl, it's happening. And people need to understand that it is happening and you need to face it. And I know it's not pretty and nice. But let me tell you something, it is happening and you are doing a disservice to people who look like me, black and brown people. And especially our young adults who live in, in Northampton by not acknowledging that it's, that it's there. And I'm happy that some of you have had really good experiences from the police. I can show you a hundred black people who have it in the city of Northampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sean Don.
Hi, yes, can you hear me? Okay.
It's a little bit low, but.
A little bit low. I can change that. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so my name is Sean. I'm from Ward three in Northampton. Um, and I just want to say thank you to those of you on city council who have been listening to the needs of our community this past year and beyond that. Um, and to Mayor Narcoitz, uh, who I guess I'm here to speak about in some respects. Thank you for funding the start of this community, Department of Community Care in the budget proposal. Um, but it sounds like you've only been listening to about five percent of the things that have been shared uh by the amount that you funded it. Um, so you can read uh more well-composed words in a letter to the mayor from the Wildflower Alliance. This is an organization that I work as part of that our director has written by following this address. Um, I don't know if you can see that, but I'll just leave it there for a moment. Um, but tonight I want to put my comments to song, not because I'm trivializing this conversation, but because. Making music is one of the ways I've gotten through stress and anger, which I'm feeling tonight. Um, and how I've grounded myself, quite honestly, to avoid involuntary hospitalization, psychiatric hospitalization and other traumatizing interventions. I really think that the, the Department of Community Care could be a great way to support residents of Northampton. In other ways than force and coercive responses, if we are to give it an honest chance. So if my guitar is audible, if not, I'll just sing a cappella, but. Um, so we can't build what we can't imagine. And I would add that we can't build what we're not supported to build. So I say, ensure adequate funding to the Department of Community Care. Otherwise, we'll destitute this new endeavor to fail and that's very tragic, very sad. Reverse increased spending on the Northampton Police Department. Um, to more fully fund the Department of Community Care and other non-police responses. Or even pay respect to the hundreds of people speaking up at last year and the many people, black, indigenous and people of color. Especially asking for change of policing based on their own experiences and adverse experiences of the police. You know, and last year that led to a hun- eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars re-allotment of Northampton Police Department funds to other means. But only about half of that was being proposed to the Department of Community Care. So I ask, where's the other half? So ensure, as the reimagining safety report states, that the Department of Community Care is accountable to. And envisioned by communities most impacted by police. Well. We're not off to a good start when the mayor has ignored the commission's fuller recommendations. So I ask that the city council, you know, make some motions there. Recognize that a co-responder model that partners police and social workers or other mental health counselors fails to address. The core issues at hand. And has been demonstrated to be ineffective at making substantive change in how communities respond to crisis over the long term. I'll just let that sink in. You could draw upon the local wisdom and practices of peer-led responses to people in distress to find new peer-led emergency responses. And I'll say, there are many people on this call that you could pull upon for those experiences and that's the end of my song. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Dan.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Dan Kennedy. I live in Northampton in four B. Um, I'm not cool enough to play guitar, so um, I'm just going to make my statement. I want to say this is now the budget season. This is where all of the hard work um both pays off and comes in. And so now it's going to be looking at the budget. I'm sure all of you are also doing this as well. Uh, I'm really excited to see the Department of Community Care as part of the, the budget as a line item. Um, and I'm also a little concerned about the, the amount of funding. Um, but also thinking about what this means in terms of actionable items before the end of the fiscal year. Next year. So I know that some of the, the funds are allocated to. Um, I'm sorry, to uh, the hires uh for the staff person and the person who's going to be doing this project. There's also, I guess my question is, what about the other funds? Um, so roughly three hundred thousand or so um that's allocated for um consultations. Um, what does that leave us if that person wants to make hires before next June? Um, to start training and what about the training for that as well? So I don't know the flexibility there, so I'm going to lean on you all and I, I'm sure the mayor will speak about it too. Um, but just thinking about what flexibility we're giving them, what opportunity we're giving them, I would obviously advocate for more. Um, for this department to handle upfront costs and things like that so that they can get the ball rolling and that they're up and running for the next year. Um, the other thing to keep in mind, I think, is really important is that we've said to start with mental health, um, substance use and calls for houselessness. Um, it makes up a lot more than four percent. The chief once estimated twenty percent for just men's, mental health. Um, but they don't have a great way of tracking that, so we don't have great numbers. Um, so this is going to be something that's going to take time to figure out, but that. This has the potential to grow, right? As soon as, if we introduce this, um, and it starts taking over things like traffic responses. Um, which were, are about half of the um, police killings in the U S begin with a traffic stop. Um, if they take that over, that's about twenty percent of the police's time. So it's something to think about in terms of how this is going to grow, something that we should all keep in mind and keep that as part of the goal. For this is to grow a response. And the biggest thing that I want to say is that this is the start of the response. That is informed by science. It's informed by research. It's the, it's informed by our values. Policing as it started was not about our values currently. Um, policing as it functions is not about our values currently. And it's also not about research. It's not that they're taking on. They're not adapting, like they're not changing the core of their model and that's just how they're structured. Um, but they can't become the responses that we know produce the best outcomes uh because of that model. And so this is saying, what do we know? What do we want? And how do we get there in a very informed way and a very careful way? And so I appreciate everyone's uh time and work towards getting us to that point uh where we might not even need police at all. Um, and that we have community responders uh instead of the model of police itself. So I will end it there. Thank you all. It's going to be a long night again.
Thank you. Next is Yaping.
Hi, I'm going to start with a chart. Um, let's see, can, can you see that? Yeah, so this is a budget. Um, it's a graph comparing the department budgets from nineteen ninety-four until um. The proposed budget for the coming year, fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The police budget over time has grown a hundred and forty-eight percent. The public works budget over time has grown fifty-eight percent. Arts and culture has grown a hundred and three percent and the human services budget has grown a hundred twenty-four percent. Um, this is another chart that compares the police budget to other comparable departments. Um, it, it leaves out fire. Um, and education is not included in these because education, when budget comparisons are. Done around the country showing the percentage of the police budget is the ju- percentage of the general budget, that education is not included. Um, and so this is comparing police to the health department, parks and recreation, libraries, um, senior services. And then this um does include the fire department, though it does, it still doesn't include education. Um, again, because that's not what, the way the comparisons are generally made. Um, but so the blue is the police department. And the green is the new proposed Department of Community Care. Um, and I want to read a couple excerpts from the statement from the movement for black lives in response to the Chauvin trial verdict. The title is true justice for George Floyd will come from investing in black people and defunding the police. Not the unjust criminal legal system. Another sentence is, we are mobilizing to defund and abolish the police. Because this is the only way we will stop police terror and bring about real safety. There is no reforming this system. The time is now to divest from deadly policing and invest in a vision of public safety that protects us all. Um, I'm going to read another quote from Dylan Rodriguez, who's an abolitionist organizer and, but also just say. I, I sometimes feel silly repeating the same things to you city councillors, you know, for so long, but it's. It's the reason we're repeating them is because it's hard to know how much it will translate to action. And if we, if we saw statements from you saying that they would translate to action, then I would gladly not log on to these meetings. And I think the same with a lot of us. Um, so Dylan Rodriguez, speaking about the uprisings last summer, says. Um. They were framed around police assassinations of black folks. That's one critical part of this, but it's not all of it. The totality of it and what you see, this is what you see folks saying literally on the street in response to what's going on with policing right now. Folks are talking about police terror. They're not simply talking about murders and assassinations. They're not even just talking about police violence.
That's time. Can you finish your sentence?
He goes on to say they're talking about a commission of terror and. It means the world is experienced fundamentally differently depending on which side of that terror you inhabit. And so I'm asking councillors, whose side will you represent in your policy? Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Lee.
Hi, my name is Lee Lamar. I live in Ward one in Northampton. Um, and I'm here tonight to state my support for defunding. The inherently violent, racist, ableist and misogynistic institution of policing. Um, I think it's important to remember when we're talking about this that this isn't about demonizing individual police officers or departments. Because I'm sure there's ones that are better and worse out there. Um, but this is about the way that policing is enacted institutionally in this country. The way that modern-day policing has come into being has violence and coercion in its roots and there's no way that any sort of reform can fix that. Um, policing at its core is coercive, controlling and punitive. It's not an institution that's actually about creating safety and I'd like to uplift the voices of community members. Who have pointed out that violent racist incidences do in fact happen here in Northampton. Um, and these things are happening in a community that's committed to progressive values with a police chief who's supposedly committed in. To progressive values. And I think that says a lot about the inability to actually reform policing to stop these kind of incidences. Um, I'd also like to talk about the fact that policing is an institution steeped in the values of toxic masculinity. Um, I've worked as a domestic violence counselor and in my experience, I've. Often seen, um, there's always some amazing humans out there, even in the most violent institutions. Um, like the story we heard from a survivor tonight about the great work of the No Hope Police on that. But most of the survivors I've worked with have been terrified of calling the police for a multiplicity of reasons. Um, and I'd like to point out that because of the toxic masculinity that pervades all police departments. Um, the culture has a much higher rate of domestic violence. Police families have a much higher rate of domestic violence than the at, than the regular population. So two studies have found that at least forty percent of police officer families experience domestic violence. In contrast to ten percent of families from the general population. And a third study of older and more experienced officers found a rate of twenty-four percent. So what this means is that police families experience domestic violence at two to four times the rate that. The general population does. So we have to ask ourselves, are these the people that we want responding to incidences of domestic violence in our community? Um, I don't think so. And those studies, by the way, come from the National Center for Women in Policing. Um, so I just want to close by saying, I moved to Northampton a few years ago because of its progressive values. And I think continuing to fund such a violent racist institution would be a betrayal of those values as a community. Um, and I think that if we underfund this Department of Community Care from the beginning, which it seems like it's, it's going to be. Um, we're setting it up to fail and we're not giving it a real chance to take care of the problems that the police don't address. And to create the kind of community safety and well-being that the police don't create in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jesse Hassenger.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Jesse Hassenger. I'm in Ward four. Uh, many people have spoken very eloquently tonight and I would like to thank all of them for uh sharing. I would especially like to thank Marita Wallace for your comments. I'm sure it seems as if your white neighbors do not hear your words, but I heard what you shared and want to hope that we all have listened to you tonight. Last year, because of the significant response to the public outcry around the reckoning of this nation's settler colonial white supremacist history. In the aftermath of the public lynching of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor. And too many others who have joined the roster of thousands upon thousands of names of innocent lives lost to the institution of slave patrols. That turned into the police. As the calendar turned, it quickly became obvious that after months of national and international protests, the. and international protests, the call for change has not yet occurred. Weekly, we have new names of people who should still be alive, people who should not who we should not know the names of because they died at the hands of an organization that upholds and protects white supremacy. Last year, the mayor and city council put forth a statement of support for inv- investing in anti-racism in this city. With much public support, over eight hundred eighty thousand dollars was cut from the police budget and left to sit while an unpaid commission was formed to explore how to address the NPD and what to do with the funds that were cut. That commission provided its answer overwhelmingly in support of creating a Department of Community Care that would, as a first step, be able to take over the nonviolent interactions that police have with our citizenry. Based upon the findings of the commission, which worked directly in concert with the NPD to get this information, our police department spends nearly seventy-five percent of its resources towards these nonviolent interactions. The support of the commission was unequivocal about its recommendation for the Department of Community Care to be well-funded with, at the very least, the full ten percent cuts from last year go towards forming this department. This proposed budget is a slap in the face of the commission and the public who envision a future where nonviolent interaction with police no longer exists. In addition to only offering two four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to this department, the mayor recommends increasing the police budget by another almost two hundred thousand dollars, bringing it to the largest police budget in decades, as Ya Ping showed us. These two aspects cannot exist at the same time. One, the mayor underfunds what is being built as an anti-racist department, and two, overfunds a department that is built on white supremacy. This is a math that does not equal out. You cannot pass this budget as offered. The Department of Community Care needs to be funded seriously for it to be able to actually do what it is supposed to do, which is help our community. At the end of the day, who here seriously wants to undercut compassionate assistance to your constituents?
Thank you. Oops, sorry. Heard that. Uh, next is Bo Clark.
Um, hi, my name is Bo. Um, I live in Hadley, but I work in Northampton and I'm a lifelong resident of Northampton. I grew up here. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to speak in support of the uh resolution for for the resolution for um uh wage theft. Wage theft has been like a huge problem, and I know like a lot of like restaurants. Um, I know the IHAG is was being in investigated by the Attorney General, so definitely a thing that is happening here. Um, yeah, lots of lots of wage theft in our uh our our town, so I would like to be in support of that and also of the Gazette workers. Um, I also wanted to thank uh Shauna Official for bringing up the um the parking that you will be voted on later. Um, I grew up on Main Street in Leeds, um and I grew up swimming uh in that river, and I think it's been a really heated discussion the last couple of years as everyone is home. Um, and I just keep I keep hearing from like white um landowners in the area that it is too loud and there's too much trash and and to just chalk it up to like we need to be more responsible like with our river. It's it's like it's a really it's a really, um, it's like a really racialized thing that's happening now. So I would I would and I I agree, I don't think that we should be spending any money on private police details to enforce parking there. Um, and just like you're we're we're criminalizing basically like black and brown families that are coming to swim in the river to to cool off um over parking tickets, towing cars. So I I would, I think that's really important, and I want to just thank Shauna for talking about that. Um, and lastly, I am insulted by the mayor's new budget. Um, after the last year of this, um, I do not think it reflects the conversation that we've been having. Um, I echo what everyone else has said. I think we need to give the commar- Department of Community Care um more money to be able to um develop alternatives and to shift so much more away from um the police. I'm not at all concerned about having less policing in Northampton. Um, I think time and time again, people come on here and they talk about their positive experiences with the police and I mean they're they're usually white folks or people who are married to police officers and you know, they're like every single time, oh, all of the new hires we're gonna lose that are the diversity hires. It's like the police union is, you know, the the force that is making that happen and like saying, you know, like with contracts who we are um allowed to get rid of, the police union is the one um filing open meeting um complaints against the city council, um and protecting officers um when they do bad things. Um, so yeah, I think we should defund the police budget by at least fifty percent, and I I think we can do better for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hansel.
Hang on. Okay. I really didn't think I was gonna talk tonight, because I really don't like to talk. But a lot of things have been said tonight that just aren't true. John Hansel Neway Holmes, my name's been mentioned a hundred times over the past few months. Um, some things were said tonight, like the tree. I had the tree by an arborist who cut the roots, and they were cut, and it was aerated. And it's gonna be fertilized, the one that fit next to the fifty-seven Warner. And when someone said tonight that the tree was trimmed and it was like overly done, um, it was done by C L Frank, the same person that Rich Parts Lady hires, the tree warden in Northampton, and that's why I work with him. Because if it's good enough for Richard, the tree warden, and we know how tough he is, it's gonna be good enough for me. Uh, things were said about the house not being for solar. Well, they all had to be built today for roof strong adult solar. So when the person says that, I don't know where they're coming from. And also the houses today have to have a conduit from the basement to the attic, so if the people do put solar on it, they can just run the cable right up. And in fact, the person number twelve Warner Street Martha, she plans on putting solar up when she goes in there. So when people say they're not solar, I don't I don't know where they're coming up with this stuff. And uh, it it's some of the things I hear tonight are just, they don't make any sense. And a lot of things are just said here. And and the houses aren't McMansions and this and that, they're eighteen hundred square feet. I don't know what the average person lives in a city in Northampton. It's, they're not, but yeah, they, I think the zero lot line is a good thing. And I think with the city of Northampton, that the planning department is a great thing. And I I I tell them there, I can build houses in any place and make money. I've always just liked Northampton since the mid-eighties when I started going up there. And it's, it's a great town. I, to me, working up there was a joy drive in there. Uh, I just, and I never thought I'd run into such a situation like this. And that was never my intentions. And sometimes I feel like I gotta apologize to the city council for all the meetings they had to listen to and the planning department and everything else. But like one person said to me, when every city council gets two hundred emails and two are good for me and the rest are all bad, you guys gotta listen to the bad ones, I guess. Um, it's not my intentions to go up there and ruin a neighborhood. Unfortunately, I guess it was overwhelming for these people, but you know, the the places for sale, they could have bought them too. It just didn't have my name on it. And I I don't know, but that's that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any further hands. Let me just check the chat real quick. Everyone see, oops, Rue Walther.
Rue Walther sixteen Warner Street. Um, I wholeheartedly support moving or having um the zero lot live work in in special permits so the neighbor can have more input uh into what is happening. And at the last meeting that I was at, uh was a joint meeting Monday night, maybe. Um, Alex Jarrett actually had a spoke. He wasn't on any either of the committees, and he had an idea for a twenty feet between houses. Um, it wasn't discussed further, but he has let me know that he was still going to bring it up, and personally, I think twenty feet between houses instead of fifteen would even be better. So zero lot lines and special permits and twenty feet between the houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Roundtree.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so my name is Grace Roundtree. I'm actually a resident of Greenfield, Mass. Um, but I'm a former resident of Ward Four in Northampton. Um, and I just wanted to um to echo um the the call to defund Northampton Police by fifty percent, reallocate those resources. Um, you know, I really, really would like to see the Department of Community Care um being funded by, you know, at least um, at least the amount that was cut last year. I think it's uh eight hundred eighty-two thousand. Um, I I might be wrong on that number. Um, but yeah, and I also just wanna, you know, um, express disappointment about you know, this this new budget that is um looking to, you know, raise the the police um, the police budgets, really disappointing after, you know, the year of people coming out and uh all the condemnation we've seen of um police violence in our community. So I just really, really wanted to, again, um, just express my support and agreement with the call to defund the police um by fifty percent and um, you know, but I I get additional funding to the Department of Community Care. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we will convene. So Laura, will you please take the role? So, Laura. You're muted, Laura.
White.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Wait.
Counselor.
Thank you. I'm here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
So, Labarge. Yeah, Counselor Labarge is muted.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thor.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. First up, we have a public hearing. This is public hearing on twenty-one point two six one, application for license to store flammables and combustibles at one forty Olander Drive. So per Master Law one forty-eight, section thirteen, Worth Commons at Village Hill, LLC has submitted an application for a license to store flammables and combustibles for one four thousand gallon LP gas underground storage tank at one forty Olander Drive in Northampton. The council will hold a public hearing Thursday, May twentieth, uh twenty twenty-one at seven to five P M. We'll hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon.
Move to open the public hearing, please.
I can.
Motion's made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Um, and we, so there's the application is attached. Uh, there is also a memo that was attached, and the council should have received a memo from Chief Daven as well. Um, and who? Counselor Quinlan?
Counselor, Counselor President.
Roll call.
Yeah, but I also include in this is also a letter in support from the uh of the community builders from a a number of undersigned uh community members of Butters, I believe. So the we have that submitted to the record, please.
Okay, so roll call, Laura, to open the hearing, please.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thor.
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is opened, and I I see a couple of people that have popped in. Uh, Julia, yeah, sorry, the the, I can't, Mike is the name. Um, are you here to speak as proponents? Yeah?
Yeah, I am here to speak on behalf of the community builders, which is the representative of the organization.
Great, thank you. Uh, go ahead.
Thanks so much. Thank you for your time today uh to listen to our petition for the license. It's actually for two two thousand gallon underground storage tanks to house propane for our domestic hot water um for our fifty-three unit mixed income affordable housing uh project up at Village Hill. We understand the choice to go with a fossil fuel might surprise some, and we wanted to provide some context on how we came to this decision and why it was the best choice for us and our project. North Commons is being designed to meet passive house standards, which is considered the highest energy standard of building technology. In order to achieve this important energy goal, we've worked with our consultants to design the best system for our project in terms of sustainability. A memo was circulated, as you mentioned, uh to staff.
Oh, Julia, you got muted again somehow. Hold on, hold on.
I'm back.
You're back.
Okay, uh sure. So a memo, as as you mentioned, was circulated to the staff and also attached to tonight's agenda that outlined this these decisions and the factors that went into them. But just quickly to summarize, domestic hot water systems powered by electric are just not efficient enough uh to power the building of this size. And also currently, the industry does not have air-to-water heat pump equipment that could adequately cover a hundred percent of the demand for this project. Um, our proposed location for these tanks greatly exceeds all setback requirements and has received sign-off from the Northampton Fire Department. We understand this is a passionate community that cares deeply for the environment. We do too, and because of this, North Commons will be the most efficient newly built multifamily building in Northampton. We are excited to be bringing this highly energy-efficient, sustainable, affordable housing resource to Northampton. And we look forward to working together with our neighbors to welcome fifty-three new families to the village in the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this license? Um. Mike?
Um, Mike George from George Propane. Just, um, we are planning to install the tanks, and if there was any technical questions, I could answer those.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, Beth, I'm gonna unmute you. Are you, are you Beth Graham's Hexby? Are you?
Yes, yes, let me get, yeah, just a sec here.
Sure. You're here to speak in favor of this project?
Pardon?
Are you here to speak in favor of this project?
I am.
Great, thank you.
Okay, yes, I am. Um, Beth Graham's Hexby, as you said, and I have lived in Northampton for over forty years um and moved to Village Hill um in two thousand fifteen. Uh, and I am here to read a letter that was signed by twenty-four other um resident owners um which I submitted to the city council. Um, and I would like to read that now. Thank you. Uh, "We, the undersigned residents, owners of Village Hill, wish to express our support of the community builders, commonly known as TCB, and their partnership with us as property owners at Village Hill. Village Hill, as you know, is a planned community designed to provide a variety of housing options with sustainable, energy-efficient design available for folks with a wide range of incomes. As the original developer and builder at Village Hill, TCB set a standard of green building and aesthetic design for affordable housing, which was then continued in the construction that followed for market-rate residences. In their development of North Commons, they only, they not only designed a sustainable, energy-efficient, near-net-zero building, but also, as a result of a close collaboration with the Village Hill community, incorporated into their design a large green space with playground, pavilion, and picnic tables that are designated for community use that will be designated. In addition, they have conveyed over eighteen acres of Mill River property to Northampton as conservation land. The new building, as Julie mentioned, represents an important step toward addressing home security for fifty-three more families and individuals in the valley. Um, of these, the fifty-three units, twelve will be rented to households at up to thirty percent of area median incomes. Twenty-seven will be rented to households at up to sixty percent of area median income and fourteen to workforce households. I believe, and others share this belief with me, that it's an ongoing ongoing testament to both the overall design and the maintenance and care given to the TCB pri- and care given to the TCB properties already in place at Village Hill, that they fit seamlessly in with the character of surrounding homes and buildings. So we support their permit application to the city for an underground propane tank requirement of their energy standards, which meet some of the highest standard, standards for green construction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing that. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of the project? I'll note, Julie says the chief, had to mention that the Community Builders, Inc., their organization has an address at 35 Village Hill Road in Northampton. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anybody that are opponents of the project who are here to speak? Okay, don't see anyone. Councillors, do you have, hold on one second, one sec. Jamila, you, can you unmute? There you go.
Yeah, I just, I had a question. If it's a public hearing, am I allowed to ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay. My only question is, I live up here in Village Hill. My question is, where are the tanks gonna be located exactly? Are they next to the housing, underneath the housing, like the rest of this places?
Okay, Julia can answer.
Sure. So there, there, there's quite a lot of open space designed in our project. So the tanks are to be located on, and I didn't give you the exact setbacks, but they're not, they're located under some open space that's not programmed, so not community space, not playground, just some green space.
Thank you. Councillor, I saw, saw, okay, Councillor Jarrett, then Councillor Dwight, then Councillor Foster.
Yeah, mine was just a response. I'm in the, on the agenda, there is a diagram that shows the location of the tanks. I don't know if it would be helpful if Laura would wanna share that for a minute, because then that, that really would make it clear of the location.
Thank you for remembering that. While Laura's pulling that up, Councillor Dwight?
Oh, thank you. Julia, is, is, are these facilities being designed in order to accommodate a retrofit should the technology ever catch up? And that you can actually do, be completely carbon neutral?
Yes. So the central plant design of our boiler system, I'm, sorry, okay, great, sorry, my screen left for a second, does mean that should the technology come where we could swap out to an electric powered system, that swap out would be much easier, say, than having individual units in each housing unit. So yes, that swap out, should the technology get there, would be simple.
And these, are you guys prepared to, say, subsidize the decommissioning and removal of the tanks? We should have come to that.
Are, are you saying, if, if, if we switch to electric, would we remove the tanks?
Exactly.
I, I, I would believe so. I'm not gonna, I don't know exactly the process that goes through to decommission them or take them out, but I think we're required to do so when they are not yours.
You're probably right. So, thank you, thank you.
Um, Mike, do you happen to know the answer to that?
Um, for decommissioning the tanks and removal?
Yes.
Um, we would, we are supplying the tanks for the, for the project, so we would, we would remove the tanks. I, we haven't really nailed down any details on, you know, how they would be removed, or who would pay for the excavation. But yeah, we would definitely, those are assets, we would remove them.
Okay. Um, Julia, on, on this, this diagram that we have, could you, Laura, could you zoom in a bit on it? You see at the top where it says 100%? Could you make it maybe a little bit bigger? And Julia, could you tell us where the tanks are on this diagram?
Fair. So it's that kind of pill-shaped drawing in the middle of the plan where it has all the, the distances measuring to it with the lines. You see, like, the building's an L shape, and it's kind of, yeah.
I see the L shape. Where?
So if, if you come down towards that, the, the part showing grading, right, you're showing kind of a hill there with some steep grading.
Yep.
If you go in between that and the building, there's a small pill shape with a bunch of lines drawn to it.
Okay, I think I see. Laura, do you know it?
I finally found the 100%.
Okay. If you see what she's talking about with your mouse, Laura, if you, you could might be able to show that. There you go. Yeah, that's it, correct?
That's right.
We've located it. Excellent. Thank you. And it's, so that's above, no, it's not above ground, it's below ground, yes? Okay. Um, was there, I feel like another councillor had their hand up. Councillor Foster, apologies.
It's okay. I think I actually jumped the gun with my hand up. I, Julia has patiently answered many questions from me over this past week, and we have not closed the public hearing yet, so that's the end of what I have to say right now.
Okay. Jamila has raised her hand again. Hold on one sec. Go ahead, Jamila.
Hi, I have one more question. So that is like, kind of that area, Julia, between, like, that swing set and the path, and then the house next to it, that little hill area? Is that what you guys are talking about?
Sure. There, there's not a house located in there. There's our building, and there's quite a large lawn in between some homes across Ford Crossing Road. So it is, it's located in just a neutral green space. There is a playground where you see the hill, so that, that plan's not showing the location or the, the design, excuse me, of the playground or kind of community area. That's kind of maybe located closer to that, that hill, that mound that you're seeing, and maybe even the rest of that thumb. So there's a walking path, a bit of a distance from it, so it's just a, a neutral green space.
Okay, thanks.
No problem, thank you.
And again, it's underground in that hill.
That's right. Yeah, it's kind of like, yeah, that, that, I'm sorry, I was referring to the hill just for.
Okay, so that spot is flat, but the tank is underground, so it's not visible.
Correct.
Uh, Councillor Mayori.
Yeah, just confirming then, so there wouldn't be any odor if it's underground? I have an above-ground one that, like, I can't smell, but my kids claim they can. So I'm just curious about odor issues.
It's not that my experience that.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Move to close the public hearing, please.
Let me, let, hold on one sec. Let me give the public one more chance. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Scroll, scroll. Okay, seeing none. Go ahead, try, do it again.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Wasn't the maiden seconded by Councillor Dwight and Councillor Labarge. Laura, roll call, please, on closing the hearing.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is closed, and we will take this up under the consent agenda. Thank you so much, Julia and Mike, for joining us, and Jamila for those questions. Next up, we have public hearing on 21.238, National Grid Verizon Poll Petition for One jointly-owned pole on Damon Road. Petition number is 23303524. For Master Law Chapter 166, Section 22, the Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 20, 2021, at 7:30 PM. A National Grid Verizon New England petition to install one jointly-owned pole on Damon Road. City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon.
Move, move to open the public hearing, please.
There's a seconded by Councillor Labarge. Roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
And Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, the hearing's opened. I'm gonna read the memo from the city engineer David Letta to DPW Director. So this says, "I've reviewed DPW records and smittles, including images, sketches, and reconstruction plans for SCOT Damon Road Project Number 608236. This petition includes a proposed installation of one joint ownership pole shared between National Grid and Verizon, referenced in City Council Order 21.238. One pole in Damon Road Number 9-50 is proposed. This pole is to be located at a point approximately 154 easterly of the intersection of River Run and Damon Road, as shown in the application sketch, and provides intermediate support for overhead wires spanning between existing poles. The proposed pole is located within the existing roadway pavement and shall not be placed until the new relocated curbing associated with the project is installed. The pole shall be placed with a minimum of 1.5 feet horizontal offset in the face of the new curb and the face of the pole. Minimum three feet clearance between the back of the pole and the back of the new sidewalk is necessary to meet minimum ADA compliance. The sketch shows a proposed guy wire to the north, which must not interfere with the required ADA sidewalk clearance. The pole shall be placed within a minimum five foot horizontal offset from the existing water service line for 104 Damon Road. Valid change permit approval by DPW is required before the work of this location commences." Okay, who, Laura? Oh, hello, Lisa? There you go.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not sure if anyone else is here from National Grid. I think that there was a gentleman that was joining last, I think he couldn't, and maybe he couldn't unmute. Do you see anybody else with a National Grid ID, ID, or?
Uh, if it's.
Anybody raising their hand, possibly?
Everybody's raising their hand. Let me do a search for National Grid and see what comes up. Just you.
Yeah, he might be a contractor, though, so it might not come up as National Grid.
There is, there is a name there, Dee Lopez, and the gentleman on the application said, Daniel Lopez.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Here he is, raising his hand. There we go.
Oh, there you go.
Daniel? Hi. Are, are you here to speak to this poll petition?
Questions or?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
On everything.
Um.
If he continues to have trouble, I will speak to it, which is fine.
Okay. I don't know. He's still unmuted, but he's kind of disappeared.
Yeah, I think he had trouble with it last time, so.
Okay.
Fine. I mean, I, it is part of the, it is part of the road widening project. It's a pole that they, you know, they need for service. And I did read the recommendations by the DPW. I did send them along to our line foreman. I think that some things will have to be worked out between the placement of the curb and the movement of the pole. Sometimes that pole has to be out of the way for the placement of that curb. So, you know, our line foreman is aware of that, of that recommendation by the DPW, so they'll work that out.
Okay.
You know, whichever has come first is fine.
Okay.
But that will, it will be discussed with the DPW.
Okay. Um, councillors, any questions or comments? Councillor Labarge?
Lisa, I'm checking out the order here. I'm looking at to install the 2JO midspan poles on Burt's Pit Road, beginning at a point approximately.
We're not at that hearing yet, Councillor Labarge.
Oh, I want.
That one's up next.
Next one.
That's the next one. Let's close this one out, and then we'll move to that one, okay?
Oh, okay.
This is Damon.
Yep.
Anyone else to talk to Damon Road? Uh, Councillor Dwight?
Move to close the public hearing, please.
Motion's been made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor Thorpe, I believe. Um, to close the hearing, roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Okay.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
And Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that hearing is closed, and now we're moving on to a public hearing on 21.239, National Grid Verizon Poll Petition for, sorry, for developments in my room, Poll Petition for Two jointly-owned, hold on one sec, polls on Burt's Pit Road, petition 3025210, Master Law Chapter 166, Section 22, the Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 20, 2021. 7:15 on National Grid Verizon New England petition to install two jointly-owned poles on Burt's Pit Road. City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon.
Move to open the public hearing, please.
Open this.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to open the public hearing. Roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes, I'm enjoying this.
Councillor Quinlan.
I could use a hug, but yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster. Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Sorry, everybody. Hearing is opened. Um, okay, I was gonna read this DPW recommendation as well. Although, if someone wants to do me a solid and read it for me so I can fix an earring, that would be so.
I'd be glad to, actually.
I'm gonna mute for a second.
Sure. Let me make sure I get the right one here, Lisa. Hang on just a sec. So, I'm reading it on my phone, so I'll be squinting. This is from National Grid. Yes, okay. I won't be able to read it off that either, though, but this is from, this is a memo from National Grid for us to start with. This is to whom may concern enclosed, please find the petition of National Grid and Verizon covering joint National Grid Verizon pole locations. If you have any questions regarding this permit, please contact none other than Lisa Jazinski.
Oh.
And then also.
Dwight, I think, is it the DPW memorandum that you're looking?
Okay. Yep, no, no, I'm sorry. I was reading all the documents. I thought I would give the council president some slack to bluff. Here's the DPW recommendation. This is from the engineer Chris Baker from the DPW. National Grid is proposing to install two jointly-owned poles on Burt's Pit Road. One approximately 1,023 feet east from the centerline of the intersection with Woods Road, and one approximately 229 feet east from that pole as state. A site visit was conducted in April 26, 2021, with the developer and a National Grid representative to discuss the proposed work as well, as to determine the field locations of the proposed poles in relation to the existing water and sewer stubs to the properties. The existing water valves and sewer cleanouts were field-located and marked by the Water Division and the Sewer and Drain Divisions respectively. The proposed location of pole number 72-50 is six feet from the existing water line service. The proposed location of pole number 71-50 is five feet from the existing water service line. Poles are located more than five feet from the existing sewer service lines and more than 10 feet from the existing water main, drain pipe, sewer main, and manhole structures. The pole should therefore be set at the state location, and there will be no utility conflicts. There are no trees in the vicinity of the proposed poles and no apparent interference of trees with the proposed overhead wires. A valid excavation trench permit issued by the DPW is required prior to construction.
Thank you very, very much for that. Very helpful. Newly-pierced ears need to be dealt with immediately. Um, Lisa?
Yes. I met with Chris Baker out there to discuss the location of these poles, and they're set in a place so that the, each pole actually will be servicing three, three lots.
Great. Um, anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this petition? Okay, anyone speaking against it? This is still Dan, who's, I think, just stuck. Um, okay, councillors, any, Councillor Labarge, you had a question about this?
Yes, thank you. Lisa?
Yes.
This is for the development of the affordable housing.
It's the Burt's Bog Development. I, I'm, I think it is affordable housing, but I don't know that. It's the Burt's Bog Development. I, I'm, I think it is affordable housing, but I don't know that for certain.
No, because we've been, this has been all approved and everything for, um, it to happen here.
Yes.
Habitat and also for Emerson Way bringing in two affordable houses. The only question I have is on Woods Road, you have an intersection there.
So what we do is we give a line of where we begin our measurement to give an indication about where the poles are going. So it usually goes from the center line of the intersection of the closest road. And I just happened to be coming from Woods Road, so I took the measurement from the center line of Woods Road to the location. Which was, I think, close to two thousand feet. I forgot what, what Gina just said. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
But it is the development that you're referring to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's nobody, but Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LeBarge, close the public hearing. Roll call, please. Laura unclosing.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe. Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Uh, hearing is closed and that too will be on the present agenda. So we are moving on to updates from the council president and committee chairs. Um, I would like to just reiterate for the public, the schedule for the upcoming budget hearings. Uh, I said it at the last meeting, but. I'll say it again and we have a little bit more information now. Um, and, uh, cause we now have the schedule for the departments that we can. Share. So budget hearings Tuesday, May twenty fifth. The council will begin their meeting at five, our meeting at five for the vote on the appointment of Charlie Nardius, Finance Director. Um, but the budget hearing will begin at five thirty and the following departments will present on their FY twenty two. Um, operating budgets on that Tuesday, May twenty fifth, in this order. First, the Health Department. North Hampton Public Schools, North Hampton Fire Rescue, and then Central Services. After hearing from the department heads, the floor will be open to public testimony. Then that hearing will continue to Wednesday, May twenty sixth at five thirty PM. So the hearing. Will be continued and start at five thirty and we will hear from the Department of Public Works and then North Hampton Police Department on their FY twenty two operating budgets in that order. And again, after hearing from the department heads, the floor will be opened to public testimony and then we will close that hearing that evening. Um, so that is the schedule for that. Uh, any other department? Uh, Counselor Jarrett.
I just have a question about how that will run. So if, if people have comments that are not specific to those departments, they may be given it either, either night?
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah. So there will be time for public testimony on both nights and people can speak to. Um, to either the departments that presented that day or other comments as well.
Thank you.
Other, other questions on that? Or how about other, um, committee chairs? Okay, moving into one minute announcements. Counselor Quinlan.
Thank you very much. Uh, I just wanted to mention that I joined, uh, for the second time, actually a neighborhood circle, uh, for Ward one A. Uh, we had a really terrific discussion the other night, uh, and maybe making some tentative plans for a. Group walk at Beara Street Marsh to explore the marsh and also to explore the history and. Use of Agnes Fox Park, including maybe, uh, trying to request the city to include bocce courts there. Uh, so it was very fun. If anybody in Ward one A specifically would like to know more about that, please feel free to contact me and I can put you in touch with the organizers.
Excellent. Any other? Announcements. Okay. Seeing none, we are gonna move on to, um, communications from the mayor. And tonight he's been to present the FY twenty twenty two budget message. Mayor Narcoitz. Oh, hold up. Sorry, apologies. There you go.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate that. Um, so this evening, um, I am, uh, as is the tradition in the city, I am presenting. The fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty two proposed budget, uh, message. Um, that is part of the requirement of the, uh, of the creation of the budget. So, um, I will read that to you now. To the honorable members of the city council, I submit for your consideration and approval. My proposed one hundred and twenty one million, seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and thirty nine dollar. FY twenty twenty two budget for the city of Northampton in accordance with Article seven, section seven dash three of our charter. The budget is comprised of a one hundred and five million, nine hundred and twenty one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollar general fund. Together with four enterprise fund budgets for water, six million, nine hundred and forty five thousand dollars. Sewer, six million, one hundred and seventy seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Solid waste, six hundred and sixty five thousand and forty five dollars. And storm water and flood control, one million, nine hundred and ninety six thousand, four hundred and eighty six dollars. This budget proposal represents a four point two eight percent increase from the current FY twenty twenty one. City of Northampton budget that ends on June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Our current operating budget, which I proposed this time last year, was significantly impacted by COVID nineteen. The overall economic uncertainty of those early months of the pandemic. Combined with significantly reduced local revenues and the decision to delay implementation of the March third, twenty twenty. Proposition two and a half override forced us to make some difficult budgetary choices for FY twenty twenty one. To recap, our overall FY twenty twenty one general fund expenditures were reduced by eight hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and eighty three dollars. Through the elimination of twenty two full-time equivalent positions across nine city departments. We did this while at the same time, making increased investments in our public schools, public health and emergency services. To protect our schoolchildren and community during the global pandemic. The budget I am proposing for FY twenty twenty two is one of cautious optimism and active recovery. As our city and the nation continue to bring the deadly COVID nineteen pandemic under control. With infection and mortality rates in decline and millions of Americans now vaccinated against the deadly virus. As this message goes to print, sixty seven percent of Northampton residents have had at least one dose of the vaccine. And forty nine percent are now fully vaccinated. This FY twenty twenty two budget proposes that we add back thirteen point two FTE city staff. Through a combination of restoring key positions cut in FY twenty twenty one, six point seven FTE. And creating new or expanded positions to address targeted needs, six point four five FTE in the coming fiscal year. Looking across all general fund departmental categories, nearly all of our general government and public safety department budgets would grow at or less than three percent. With the exception of building inspections and information technology services where positions or hours cut in FY twenty twenty one are restored. The city's largest municipal department, Public Works, would also see its budget grow at a higher than average rate. Of eight point eight seven percent or three hundred and twenty one thousand, one hundred and twenty six dollars. Primarily due to the restoration of two FTE positions cut from the Forestry Parks and Cemeteries Division in FY twenty twenty one. During the shutdown of recreation programs and an increase in funding for street repair that more accurately reflects actual annual asphalt costs. The FY twenty twenty two budget continues our strong decade-long investment in education. And support for our two public school districts, which we work to largely shield from COVID nineteen budget cuts in FY twenty twenty one. Our appropriations to the North Hampton Public Schools, NPS, and Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School. Would grow four point oh four percent and three point five eight percent respectively. And the single largest departmental appropriation increase across the entire general fund budget. Is the nearly one point three million dollar increase proposed for NPS. This budget also provides funding increases to support our libraries, the arts and parks and recreation programs. With a combined increase to the culture and recreation line of eighty thousand, nine hundred and forty five dollars or three point seven three percent. The department budget category receiving the largest percentage increase and second largest dollar increase in new funding. Under my proposed budget is Health and Human Services, which would grow by forty one point seven four percent. Or six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy four dollars. The COVID nineteen pandemic has provided many important lessons learned. And chief among them is the need for municipalities to ensure a robust public health infrastructure. To meet the current and future health challenges facing communities. Northampton was fortunate to have already made significant investments in public health prior to COVID nineteen. And our Health Department, under the leadership of Director Meredith O'Leary, has been a regional leader since before and throughout the pandemic. The emergency also exposed the need for additional staff support moving forward. My proposed budget would increase the Health Department appropriation by thirty two point three three percent or one hundred and forty four thousand, seven hundred and twenty four dollars. This includes funding for an assistant health director position to both support Director O'Leary's leadership of the department. Department's expanded, critical and multifaceted mission, as well as to provide better continuity in our absence. We also propose to make permanent the second public health nurse hired during the COVID nineteen. Hired during COVID nineteen, which was temporarily supported by Federal CARES Act funding. Finally, the general fund would begin paying for the position of Prevention Coalition Coordinator. Which has become a critical component of our efforts to reduce youth substance use. And for the last ten years has been funded by a federal grant that is ineligible for renewal. Senior Services would receive a sixty two point five six percent increase in funding of one hundred and fifty one thousand, one hundred and ninety nine dollars. Largely to restore positions and services that were necessarily sidelined. As COVID nineteen put our senior population most at risk for serious illness and death. I am grateful to Senior Services Director Marie Westberg and her reduced core staff. For continuing their important outreach to and support for seniors via telephone, email and remote programming. Including standing up a new technology training and lending program. I am also grateful to the seniors of the city for understanding our need to rapidly convert their beloved senior center. Into a full-scale regional vaccination site that to date has administered more than thirty thousand doses of life-saving COVID nineteen vaccine. Veteran Services, which continues its critical mission. Of serving our city's veterans undeterred by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Maintains all current staffing with increases for negotiated COLAs and step raises. The total budget for the department, department shows an overall decrease of sixty nine thousand, two oh four or seven point nine six percent. However, that is solely attributable to our continued downward adjustments of the benefit line item. To reflect the decrease in veterans currently receiving benefits as our World War Two and increasingly Korean War veterans have passed. And America's military involvement in Afghanistan has drawn down from a peak deployment of ninety eight thousand troops in two thousand and eleven. To twenty five hundred at the beginning of twenty twenty one. We have included a chart on the Veteran Services budget page to reflect the historical rise and decline of this particular line item. For context, in my very first budget in FY twenty thirteen, I proposed a one hundred and eighty five thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollar increase. To this same line item to more accurately reflect the actual benefits we were providing, which were approaching seven hundred thousand dollars a year. The current FY twenty twenty one budget saw the line item reduced to five hundred and forty seven thousand. And the FY twenty two budget before you would only fund it at four hundred and seventy thousand. Which is closer in line with our three-year average of actual expenditures. It is also important to note that these state chapter one fifteen veterans benefits are ultimately reimbursed seventy five percent by the Commonwealth. And in some cases, one hundred percent for homeless veterans. The Health and Human Services Division also includes one more significant funding increase. Through the addition of a new departmental line item for a Department of Community Care. The Northampton Policing Review Commission, a fifteen-member resident commission appointed jointly by the mayor and city council. To conduct a sweeping public policy review and community conversation about policing and community safety. Released its final report entitled Reimagining Safety on March eighteenth, twenty twenty one. One of the primary recommendations of the NPRC was the establishment of a new Department of Community Care. To provide multiple types of civilian responders to community needs, including peer response to mental health and substance use crises. As an alternative to police response. The NPRC report called for funding the establishment of this new department in FY twenty twenty two. With a goal of making it operational by FY twenty twenty three. It also made other immediate recommendations, including further data analysis of policing calls and staffing. A community needs assessment and additional items requiring further study and community engagement. This FY twenty twenty two budget proposal includes a budget of four hundred and twenty three thousand, nine hundred and fifty five dollars. For the new Department of Community Care. This includes funding for the hiring of a senior level project coordinator to assemble the new department. Which would include developing its staffing and organizational structure, job descriptions, operating policies. Training and license and training and licensing, licensure requirements. As well as coordinating with other city departments, forming an implementation advisory committee. And pursuing the many emerging state and federal grants for this work. There is also funding for a part-time administrative assistant to support the work of the project coordinator. Together with significant additional resources, including three hundred thousand dollars allotted for additional data analysis. A recommended community needs assessment and other outside consulting support and studies as needed. My goal with this first budget is to put in place the initial staffing and resources needed to fully develop the department. And provide the next mayor of Northampton, whom voters will elect in a little over a hundred and twenty days after the start of the new fiscal year. A recommended blueprint for an operational Department of Community Care. That can be codified through both an administrative order and ultimately their first city budget for FY twenty twenty three. Twenty five years ago next month, the city embarked on a process to move emergency nine one one dispatching duties. Away from sworn police officers and firefighters to civilian dispatchers. Based on the report of an appointed mayoral study committee made up of city residents, municipal staff and city councilors. Despite successful models for unified civilian dispatch in many other locales. There were significant concerns expressed at the time by both residents and police and fire personnel. That civilians would not have the necessary training or experience to manage these critical life or death calls. Or that it would be duplicative and cost inefficient to create a new separate city agency. What began with some initial budget funding, state grants and an experienced administrator hired to carefully plan and implement the concept. Is now a model twenty four seven public safety communication center led and staffed. By highly trained civilian dispatchers who are today fully integrated into the city's organizational structure. As Northampton embarks on a similar path toward creating a civilian response to mental health and drug use crises. Home, houselessness and other issues needing community care. As well as working on the other longer-term recommendations of the NPRC. I am hopeful that we can do so with a spirit of shared purpose and collaboration. Among all stakeholders and across all city departments, including Chief Casper. And the dedicated women and men of the Northampton Police Department. This FY twenty twenty two operating budget is accompanied by a new fiscal stability plan. Which was effectively renewed by the voters of Northampton on March third, twenty twenty. When they overwhelmingly adopted a two point five million dollar general operating override. This budget is fully balanced, utilizing the expanded revenue from the override. And drawing no funds from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund that was first created in two thousand and thirteen. When I proposed this multi-year budgeting approach to the taxpayers. The updated fiscal stability plan that follows this message in the budget book. Provides a financial roadmap for how the next mayor and city council could sustain our high-quality city and school services. Through fiscal year twenty twenty six, if they choose to stay on this course moving forward. This is my tenth and final city budget as mayor of the great city of. This is my tenth and final city budget as mayor of the great city of North Hampton, and I want to take this opportunity to reflect on the significant progress that we have made over the last ten years to rebuild, stabilize, and strengthen our finances. When I first entered the mayor's office during fiscal year two thousand and twelve, our city finances were still recovering from the economic ravages of the Great Recession. The city's stabilization fund contained just under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The capital stabilization fund had a grand total of four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, and our total reserves as a percentage of the FY, FY two thousand and twelve general fund budget stood at one point six-three percent. Our capital improvement investments had necessarily shrunk in size and scope, and in the prior fiscal year, there had been no capital spending due to limited resources. Our credit rating with national bond agencies was A-plus with negative outlook. We were stuck in a cycle where city and school budget writers would spend the majority of the budget process agonizing over what staff or services would need to be cut in order to balance increasingly but effectively level-funded budgets where revenues capped by Proposition Two and a half were regularly outpaced by inflation. After ten years of focused work, careful multi-year planning, and fiscal discipline, I am proud to report that our fiscal house is strong and in good order. At the beginning of FY two thousand and twenty-one, our stabilization fund balance stood at over five point two million, our capital stabilization fund at almost three point nine million, and the aforementioned fiscal stability stabilization fund at over two point five million. In total, our reserves as a percentage of the general fund have risen from one point seven percent in FY two thousand and eleven to seventeen point four-five percent in FY two thousand and twenty-one. Our bond rating was upgraded to the highest triple-A with stable outlook rating by Standard and Poor's in FY two thousand and seventeen, where it remains today. This has lowered our borrowing costs and allowed us to make robust investments in our capital infrastructure, including replacing aging equipment and vehicles, deploying critical new technology to city and school departments, and addressing serious deferred maintenance on our city streets and roads, just to name a few examples. With the extreme exception of staff cuts precipitated by deferral of the override during COVID nineteen, we have freed ourselves from the annual cycle of cutting staff and services each year to balance the budget. We have been careful stewards of taxpayer dollars, adhere to our multi-year plans and financial policies, and given regular reports to the city council and residents on our progress. All of this work to solidify our budget and finances has included a special emphasis on fiscal transparency with all budgetary documents, capital programs, bond rating reports, audits, and my seemingly endless supply of PowerPoint presentations accessible online, together with new digital tools for residents to view and understand city finances. I am extremely proud of our financial progress as a city and will leave City Hall on January second, two thousand and twenty-two, knowing that my administration left North Hampton's budget and finances in a better and stronger position than when I entered the corner office. Municipal government is a team sport, however, and I am grateful to the city council, department heads, and staff who have all supported and contributed to our collective fiscal success over these last ten years. I am especially grateful to the residents of North Hampton for entrusting me with this important and at times daunting responsibility. I would be remiss if I did not pay special tribute to someone who joined the mayor's staff as finance director a few months before I arrived and has been an outstanding and tireless steward of the city's finances during my ten years as chief executive. Susan Wright will retire at the end of next month after a stellar thirty-six-year career in municipal government, including seventeen years with the city of North Hampton, first as NPS Business Manager for seven years and the last ten years as Finance Director. It has been my personal honor to call Susan a colleague and friend, and this mayor and the residents of our city owe her a debt of gratitude for her work on this and previous budgets and so many other aspects of our fiscal success. Thank you for your service, Susan, and enjoy your well-earned retirement. Finally, as with all previous budgets, I also want to thank the other members of my staff for their hard work in helping to gather, assemble, edit, and finalize for printing this massive budget document. Thank you, Mayoral Assistant Court Klein, Administration License, Licensing and Economic Development Coordinator Annie Lesko, and Chief of Staff Alan Wolf for your many contributions to the proposed FY two thousand and twenty-two budget. I look forward to working with the city council over the next several weeks to answer any questions about this budget proposal or to provide additional information it may need. Respectfully submitted, David J. Narcoitz, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Narcoitz. We're very grateful to receive this budget from you. Um, I'm sure it was kind of bittersweet for you, um, but I've always appreciated your well-written budget messages, and I thought this one in particular was especially well-done. So I thank you, and of course, Finance Director Wright, who we can never possibly thank enough for her service to North Hampton, and your staff for the very hard work that went into creating this year's budget, as well as your previous nine budgets. So, thank you. We've scheduled a good deal of time in the next few weeks for the council to have questions and deliberation on the budget and to dig into specifics. So this is not the time for a detailed discussion or for line item questions, but, uh, Mayor, may I ask the council if they have general questions or comments for you right now?
Sure.
Okay. Councillors? Councillor Nash?
Thank you, Council President. I, uh, Mayor, um, you know, it's not often that I'm, I'm, I'm hearing a speech about finances that I actually feel a little bit emotional and that this one kind of crossed that line. It really poked the scope of how far we've traveled under your leadership of, with the city here, that, um, that the, the fact that during COVID nineteen, you know, we did minimal layoffs and we kept our, our, our schools and all of our services strong, and, um, that, um, that the city is on such firm financial ground right here, it's, it's, it's actually very remarkable, you know, that you're introducing a new department tonight and that we have the finances in place to actually, you know, um, discuss that and entertain that, uh, in this new budget. It's, I just want to thank you for all of your work around our finances and also Director Wright as well.
Thank you, councillor.
Any other comments from the councillors? Okay. Seeing none, um, we will talk to you about this again. Thank you so much. Uh, next up, we have resolutions. First is twenty-one point two-six-six Resolution in Support of Workers of the Hampshire Gazette. This is on second reading. Councillor Dwight?
Uh, once again, because of a familial relationship with the ownership of the newspaper, even though I enjoy no financial benefit or any discreet knowledge of their decisions or choices, I think it's appropriate that I recuse myself from this conversation.
Thank you. Um, would someone else like to make a motion then?
Let's have make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor LeBarge, seconded by Councillor Quinnlin. Is there any discussion on second reading? Uh, Councillor Mayori?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Sarah for that update. I'm, I'm really glad to hear what's, what's going on, and there's been some movement in that, you know, we'll all be paying attention, I'm sure.
Thank you. Is that Councillor LeBarge?
Yes, I want to echo what Councillor Rachel Mayori just stated because I wanted to also come out with what we had heard tonight from the reporter, which was great news.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, um, roll call please, Laura, on second reading.
Look, Quinnlin?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe?
Yes.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayori?
Yes.
And Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Okay, that passes on second reading, thank you. Moving on to twenty-one point two-six-seven, a resolution for the recommendations of North Hampton Policing Review Commission. This is on second reading.
Move approval, please.
Okay. Motion's made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor LeBarge. Um, any discussion on second reading? Councillor Nash?
Yeah, uh, yes, thank you, Council President. Last time, I proposed a rather lengthy amendment, and this week, and, um, now that I've had a little more sleep, um, that, uh, that I would like to amend, uh, the, the resolution where it says on the first, therefore, now, therefore, it be resolved that the North Hampton City Council supports, cross out the, all fourteen recommendations outlined in the final report. So the add is all fourteen.
Second. It is seconded by Councillor Mayori. Discussion on that amendment, anybody? Okay, seeing no discussion on it, roll call please on the amendment, Laura?
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe?
Abstained.
Um, Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayori?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
And Councillor Quinnlin?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any further discussion as amended?
Just to thank, uh, Councillor Nash for his amendment.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call please, Laura, on second reading as amended.
Okay. Um, Councillor Thorpe is abstained. Um, Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayori?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Quinnlin?
Yes.
And Councillor Shara?
Yes. Okay, that passes in second reading. Next is twenty-one point two-seven-two, a resolution urging action on an act to prevent wage theft, promote employer accountability, and enhance public enforcement.
Move approval, please.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by Councillor LeBarge. I will read it. Okay, this is upon the foundation of Councillor Jean-Louis Shara, Councillor William Dwight, and Councillor Alex Jarrett. Whereas the practice known as wage theft harms employees, their families, and their communities, and whereas according to the Economic Policy Institute, the amount of wage theft nationwide is estimated to be at least three times as much as all robberies, burglaries, larcenies, and motor vehicle thefts combined, yet enforcement at the federal level is less than it was in nineteen forty-eight despite a workforce six times larger. And whereas low-income immigrant and workers with limited English proficiency are most vulnerable to this practice, and whereas workers, especially those in the construction and hospitality, hospitality businesses are vulnerable and should be protected from employers, contractors, and subcontractors who engage in illegal practices such as paying in cash, failing to pay overtime, failing to make payroll deductions, not covering workers with workers' compensation or unemployment benefits, or misclassifying workers as independent contractors. And whereas there are several practices injurious to workers and their families and the city that constitute wage theft, including the failure to pay a required minimum wage, National law, Chapter one fifty-one, Section one, the failure to pay, uh, overtime as required, National law, Chapter one fifty-one, Sections one A and one B, paying an unreasonable or oppressive wage to an employee in farming or agriculture or other occupations, National law, Chapter one fifty-one, Section two A, seven, and, uh, two A and seven, the failure to pay wages timely or in full, National law, Chapter one forty-nine, Section one forty-eight, one fifty, National law, Chapter one fifty-one, Sections nineteen and twenty, the failure to properly classify an individual as an employee, National law, Chapter one forty-nine, Section one forty-eight B, the failure of the employer to provide sick time at a minimum of one hour of earned sick time for every thirty hours worked by an employee, National law, Chapter one forty-eight, Section, uh, one forty-eight C, improperly taking or requiring workers to pay any part of their tips to employers, National law, Chapter one forty-nine, Section one fifty-two A, a staffing agency charging prescribed fees or charging more for transportation than allowed, National law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-nine C, uh, C and D, the failure to provide an individual the status of employee when such status would be appropriate, National law, Chapter one fifty-one, Section nineteen, and whereas in order to be protected against wage theft, employees must be fully informed about working conditions and their terms of employment, which at the outset of employment includes being provided with information regarding their rate of pay, whether that rate is based on an hourly shift, day, week, salary piece, or commission rate. And whereas to be further protected against wage theft, an employee should also be informed about other employment terms, such as whether there are any allowances claimed as part of minimum wage, including meal, tip, or lodging allowances, the regular payday, information about their employer's name, address, phone number, plus name, address, and phone number of the employer's workers' compensation insurance carrier. And whereas employers acting as lead contractors may employ labor contractors and labor subcontractors, all of whom must be held accountable if they engage in wage theft with any of their employees. And whereas for the protection of workers, domestic law must define wage theft and must provide rights and remedies for workers who have been victims of wage theft by employers, and further that such rights and remedies should be enforceable by the Attorney General, the aggrieved individual worker, or by a whistleblower or representative organization. And whereas employees should be protected in seeking their rights under the wages and hours laws, and should be free from employer discrimination or retaliation for asserting those rights, National law, Chapter one forty-nine, Section one forty-eight A. And whereas in two thousand and seventeen, the North Hampton City Council approved, quote, "an order wage compliant," an order, wage compliance certificates required for licenses," unquote, and Mayor David J. Narcoitz issued an executive policy order establishing wage law compliance certification requirements for procurement and contracts, and an executive policy order establishing wage law compliance certification requirements for tax increment financing TIF, each of which support the city's desire to avoid doing business with vendors and/or subcontractors who have engaged in wage theft or employment practices that violate National law, Chapter one forty-nine, Section one fifty-one, or the Fair Labor Standards Act. And whereas H nineteen fifty-nine and S eleven seventy-nine, an act to prevent wage theft, promote employer accountability, and enhance public enforcement, which is co-sponsored by North Hampton State Senator Joe Comerford and State Representative Lindsay Sabadosa, will codify the definition of wage theft within the laws of the Commonwealth, require employers to disclose terms of employment, including those relating to pay, employer contact information, and workers' compensation coverage, and also provide a process for whistleblower, individuals, whistleblowers, the Attorney General, or for the aggrieved employee to enforce violations constituting wage theft without fear of retaliation or discrimination. Now, therefore be resolved, the City Council of North Hampton asks the state legislature to pass with haste H nineteen fifty-nine and S eleven seventy-nine to add state protection to the municipal protection for North Hampton workers and provide those protections to workers throughout the Commonwealth. Yet further resolved that the administrative assistance of the City Council shall cause a copy of this resolution to be sent to Governor Charles Baker, lead sponsor on S eleven seventy-nine, Zellin D. Domenico, uh, lead sponsor on H nineteen fifty-nine, Daniel M. Donahue, State Senator Joe Comerford, State Representative Lindsay Sabadosa, chairs of the Joint Committee of Labor and Workforce Development, State Senator Tricia D. Jellin, and State Representative Josh S. Cutler. Okay. So. It's already on the floor, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Dwight?
I was gonna ask you to speak to it first, but I think you need a little break.
Okay.
Just to, um, yeah. Lisa Clausen spoke earlier, and as is noted in, in the body of this resolution, actually, we've, we've done what actions we can that we are allowed under law, and that is essentially, we, uh, created a law and there are subsequent executive policy orders, um, that we can compel contractors who are applying for work for, uh, the city of North Hampton that they have to abide by these, these laws, actually existing in standing laws. So what, most of what that resolution is is citing laws, but without a clear definition of the term wage theft. It's interesting, essentially beats, beats, he was approaching this concept from a multitude of directions, all of which make it very hard for it to be enforced. The Attorney General's office has struggled with this for some time. The fact is, is that the order that we have, um, has served us actually okay. It's done a good job, but it hasn't. It's done a good job, but it hasn't protected the, we, we are an economy that, uh, as you've heard throughout COVID, for instance, relies heavily on what's identified as service industry workers, people who work within the shops and the businesses here in town. And I, I was one of them until COVID, actually, have been for thirty some odd years. Fortunately, I was aligned in working with uh, employers who were all very conscientious and played well, well above minimum wage, provide health insurance, pay the living wage, and allow the protections of this fat guy to work in downtown North Hampton and downtown Florence. But I'm very privileged in that respect. There are a myriad of people who are subject to uh, employers who have historically and continue to exploit workers, uh, and as noted, most of the vulnerable, most vulnerable people, to whom we've been speaking about a lot lately. It is, the, what makes this important, this appeal to the legislature, is that to codify the term wage theft and acknowledge it not as a series of myriad crimes that may affect some people, but as a culture of criminality that has been condoned historically, and ex, a form of exploitation that uh, is, is, and when it's prosecuted, which is not very often, has been proven to be a, a stark obscenity that we've, that the, our citizens, our fellow citizens have had to endure. So with that in mind, I think it would be, it would be forward-thinking of us to actually, in this state, in this commonwealth, the place where we supposedly share all the wealth, uh, that we protect people who don't enjoy the wheel of the commons and that they should enjoy the protections of the state that purports to protect them. And so I'm grateful for Rep. Sabadosa and Senator Comerford's fervent advocacy here, and I hope that we can continue to give them the support that they need to make this, make this law and now in the state.
Thank you. Counselor Jarrett, would you like to go next?
Sure, thank you. Uh, thanks, Counselor Dwight. I second all that you have to say there. I wanted to elaborate a little on the issue of enforcement and the disproportionate way that we're, we spend money on addressing property theft. Just, you know, compare, it referenced in, in the resolution. And yet leaves this issue, which, as has been said, you know, primarily affects people who are low-income and immigrants and workers with limited English proficiency. So, uh, just the, the critical part that the Attorney General's office be, be given enough resource uh, to do that work, and also that our local law enforcement be well-versed in these issues. Right, anyone who is comfortable approaching them for guidance, um, in addition to the other resources available, such as community legal aid and our future Department of Community Care. So providing uh, that, getting that information out there and make sure that people are aware of their rights is, is a critical part of this. So, um, thank you, uh, Counselor Shara and Counselor Dwight for uh, welcoming me onto this one, this resolution.
Thank you. Um, thank you to my co-sponsors who just spoke very beautifully about this for joining me on the resolution. Um, and thank you to those who spoke at public comment tonight, um, and, and people who emailed in support, and a very special thanks to Lisa Clausen. Lisa Clausen was instrumental to the work that the city did around wage theft in twenty seventeen. And when I approached her about doing a resolution supporting these state bills, after reading her guest column in the Gazette in April, um, she was enthusiastic and so helpful. And so thank you to her for all of her help. Um, and also thanks to Senator Comerford and, and Rep. Sabados and the other Western Mass legislators who signed on to that column and who are co-sponsors of the bill. You know, any of this should go without saying, right? That like you can't cheat workers or be dishonest or pay off the books or not pay your taxes or not provide required benefits or prey upon vulnerable workers, right? And so that, it should go without saying, but that's why we, we thought it was important to list some of the various forms of wage theft and, and the laws that were being violated. As Ms. Clausen wrote in the opening of, of that column in April, nationwide, nearly one billion dollars in wages are stolen from workers each year by their employers and less than one percent of that money is ever recovered. So, the bill we are expressing support for helps ensure that lead contractors can't use subcontractors who commit wage theft and claim then no responsibility for it. Um, it also allows the AG's office to bring civil wage cases to court um, and, and helps our AG, um, you know, fight this at her, um, at her level. So, we hope the council will join us in supporting this bill, which will help bolster, as Counselor Dwight said, you know, what North Hampton has done, but also provide greater protections uh, here and throughout the Commonwealth. So, kind of a process note, we're hearing that there's a joint hearing in the Committee on Labor and Workforce Development in early June, though that date hasn't yet been posted, so we don't know the exact date. So, since it could have a hearing before, we might take it up at a, at a second reading, I would respectfully request two readings, um, if it passes on first reading, to ensure that we can add that, add this resolution to the testimony for that hearing. So thank you for considering that. Counselor Maori?
I, I was really excited to see this on the agenda. Thank you to the sponsors. This is something that's really bothered me for a long time. I, I know, I didn't go to leave from some, some of the uh, worker center events that how, how, you know, prevalent it is in the valley. I was first kind of, it was first brought to my attention when I was following migrant farmworkers for my master's thesis, and I was looking at pesticide exposure, but I ended up being equally appalled by the brazen and completely commonplace wage theft. I, I was floored by it, I, I was, and it was just kind of the way of, of things. And I, and as Counselor Dwight says, it really, it preys on inherent, you know, existing inequalities and really need to shout out that also I was living in Brooklyn, I mean, women, domestic laborers, uh, the women I knew, were particularly vulnerable to wage theft, and it becomes a real gender and class, and of course, race issue. And so I'm, I'm excited to see this, and I'm really excited to see the bills pending, and there's really no reason for them not to pass. I'm gonna be paying attention to that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, um, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
And Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Move to suspend rules, please.
Uh, motion was made by Counselor Dwight, was it seconded by Counselor Maori?
No, it was seconded by Counselor Labarge.
Okay.
Dwight and I were doing it in unison.
Okay, um.
I defer to Counselor Maori on that.
I like how we harmonize, that's fine.
Okay, uh, any discussion on suspension of rules? Roll call on suspending rules, please, Laura.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay.
Move second reading, please.
Seconded.
Supposedly by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call please on second reading.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yeah.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that passes in two readings. Okay. I am just taking a look at who's here and considering moving some stuff around on the agenda. Um, unless, I'm not sure that anyone has hear from those hearings earlier. Um, so unless there is an objection, I'd like to skip the consent agenda for now. And skip finance unless there's any objection to that. Mayor Narcoets? Can you pop in for a sec?
The only question would be, I don't know, Carolyn is, is Wayne here? Uh, rather, is, who's here to speak about the Audubon? Um, is it Wayne or Carolyn? I'm not sure. In finance, there's the Audubon, but just.
No, Carolyn's here for later, so I don't know.
I know for later, but I just didn't know if Wayne was here for the, um, for the Audubon easement, but I can also talk to that, so.
I don't see Wayne.
Okay.
Carolyn.
I don't think either Wayne or Sarah were planning to speak to that item.
It's fairly straightforward, so it's not really, uh, it's not really, you know, it's, it's, so it, it makes sense that they wouldn't be here, so, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so you don't, there's no objection to take, taking some other stuff first? Okay.
Counselor Shire?
Yes.
If I may, so Mayor, just as well, just to let you know, um, Sarah did send me a little blurb yesterday about this as well, so I can read from what she also sent to me.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we are well covered. Um, so in that case, what I would like to do is skip down to ordinances. Anyone have an objection? Counselor Quinlan?
No objection, but can we just take a short recess?
Yes. Uh, five minutes. I'm good? Okay. Thank you, okay, we are back and we are gonna skip down to ordinances. Um, and I'm just gonna, just so people understand, so number fifteen ordinance, ordinances not yet referred, this was referenced at public comment, those are going to be referred back to committee, so there's not gonna be discussion on those tonight, so I'm skipping those for now, because we're not gonna discuss them. But we are gonna go down to sixteen ordinances, and we're at twenty-one point two one seven, an ordinance to move zero lot line from section ten point one four to section six point one three. This is on first reading, it was referred to Community Resources and Planning Board and Legislative Matters. A neutral recommendation came out of Community Resources, joint public hearing held at Planning Board and Legislative Matters. Positively recommended by Legislative Matters and recommended for the planning board passed 6-0 with one abstention. So.
Move approval, please.
I'll second that.
Motioned by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. I am going to read this one. It's upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoitz and plans sustainability. An ordinance of the city of North Hampton, Massachusetts, providing that the code of ordinances, city of North Hampton, Massachusetts, be amended to refer zero lot line projects to a new subsection 6.13. Be ordained by the City Council, City Council of North Hampton, City Council of San Plus Falls, amend chapter 350, attachment seven and eight. Zero lot line, single family, see section 350, 10.14 is what's being crossed out and it's been moved to 6.13. Anywhere else in chapter 350 will place zero lot line 10.14 with two sections 6.13. Okay. And Carolyn is here and on a beach, apparently. She wishes.
Yep. Soon. Good evening. Thanks for pulling this forward. I know that there are a lot of people that are interested in this ordinance. So what I thought I would do to explain, I know several counselors have been sort of following this right along, but I have a short presentation just for the benefit of people who haven't been to one of the public hearings. And so if it's okay, I'd like to share my screen.
You should be able to, give it a try.
Okay. Yep. Let's see here. I should have gone to, okay. So. Just a second here. So can you see that? I assume you can. Okay. So first, I wanted, there was a brief description about when this was initially introduced and there have been some modifications which I'll go through as part of the presentation, but I also want to do some explanation because some of the reasons why we're here is because it's, it can be a cumbersome zoning ordinance to explain for users as well as anybody else who sort of looks at how to build out a single-family house lot. So what we taught, what we mean when we talk about zero lot line as, and it's a term used not just in North Hampton, not just in Massachusetts, but sort of around the country. But it typically refers to a situation where you've got a reduced side lot line between two properties and it can be reduced all the way down to zero. So typically you have a setback from property lines where you can place a structure and they are, they may be different from, on all four sides, you might have one front setback that's different from side setbacks, it's different from a rear setback. And in this situation, we're talking about a side setback line. And in a way, it's defined in North Hampton as a reduction of a side setback line from one of the two side lot lines as it's defined currently in today's ordinance. It's, it's been an option for, a way to lay out property in North Hampton for about 20 years. Initially, it was adopted to help facilitate, actually originally with Habitat for Humanity and developing two-family homes that had structures that were attached, but property owners, we wanted to give property owners the opportunity to be able to own the lot underneath those individual units or attached units that were owned separately and individually. It was also adopted initially within cluster open space layout as one form of creating parcels within an open space residential development. But later it was adopted as a by right mechanism for arranging structures on parcels within the urban residential B and urban residential C districts. And primarily at that time, it was used as a mechanism to reduce the frontage required in those districts. So at the time, there was a 75-foot frontage requirement, which is the width of a lot along a street in both the URB and C districts, actually it was a little bit larger in some instances in URB. So the zero lot line tool was used to reduce frontage down to 65 feet and also to reduce setbacks. So in the upper right-hand corner, there's an example here of a survey where you can see the unexisting house footprint on the property and a new property line was drawn very close to the existing single-family house, but the owner owned the entire parcel, wanted to create a separate lot and effectively subdivide that off and build another structure. And so that structure was built on this new lot with a reduced frontage. And so this person took advantage of that reduction in frontage. And this aerial photo shows the built, the current built situation on that property where this was the existing house from which this new lot was carved and a new house was created. So you can see the proximity of the structures to the side lot line, so they took advantage of that reduced setback in that situation. On the lower left is a situation where the tool was used to create a dividing line down the middle of a structure, there are two separate units, but in this situation, the property owner of the condominium unit or condex could actually have ownership of the parcel underlying that unit. So that's been used in that kind of scenario. The, over time, we've made some modifications to the way this is used. And since about 2012 forward, it's really primarily been used to help reduce setbacks on parcels. So, and as with any zoning ordinance that is adopted, the goal from the planning office's perspective and the city in terms of policy direction is to really clearly define what we want out of zoning, what kind of development is appropriate for North Hampton, how we want to get that development and really spell those out clearly. So there's a clear path forward for approval. And some, some folks complain that we have multiple and convoluted rules and strategies to address desired outcomes, but at the same time, there's an acknowledgement that at least by spelling out what we want, that we know that in the, at the end of the day, the community will achieve what it wants and it's, and it's, there's a clear way to get there, so there's not a lot of hurdles thrown up because everything's spelled out in the zoning ordinance. So those things, you know, relate to mitigation, screening, stormwater, solar vortaecks and the like. There's some examples more recently of how this has been used for a series of zero lot lines on this lower-left corner. There's, there was an existing house here and two lots were carved off to create structures that were closer to the lot line than a standard setback, but because again, the property owner owned the entire parcel at the time this was created, it gave them more flexibility about where to locate those structures. So the details of this ordinance, again, focused on the urban residential B and C districts, which in the upper-right corner is a zoning map of the city. The dark orange area is urban residential B, I'm sorry, the darkest orange is urban residential C around North Hampton and then a slightly lighter shade of orange is urban residential B that is within North Hampton and then sort of expands up to Florence and around Florence Center in this area. But again, this is to, the changes before you were related to looking at design issues and tweaking those to address issues and concerns that had been raised during some public comments related to the use of this layout tool for single-family homes. In particular, there was a concern about structures being too close to one another by utilizing the zero lot line zoning. This ordinance also is intended to clarify what's allowed, what the tweaks would allow and, and create a graphic representation of that so that it's a little bit easier to read than just plain text. It also creates a maximum setback for how much you can reduce the distances from, between a structure and its property line. And also, just a reorganization of the code itself to bring the, because this is really mostly about dimensional standards, relocated into the section of the code that has discussion and regulations all about the dimensions for a whole lot of different development types. This ordinance was never and is not now intended to limit the size of homes or to try to address a concern about the size of a house or to address any kind of affordability. It's really just tweaking an existing ordinance that has created flexibility for single-family homeowners or people creating single-family house lots to have different ways of locating structures on the property. There have been some modifications since this was first introduced to City Council. There was a lot of discussion during public hearing and from Community Resources as well as Legislative Matters and Planning Board about the dimension and the distances between side setbacks. The city solicitor suggested some language changes to clarify setbacks and the standard setback. And then there are some additional changes you've seen from Counselor Jared and I'm sure he might, he would want to speak to those. But some of those relate to, again, trying to make more, create more clarity with the language, renaming it from zero lot line to reduced lot line since this really is about reducing side setbacks as opposed to necessarily just keeping or creating zero feet from a, from a side setback. And then, again, maintaining emphasis on design and, and creating a rhythm along the street that is consistent with typical or standard setbacks in that zoning district or the two zoning districts in which this applies. And, whoops. The only other thing I would add, you know, before taking questions, I'd be happy to answer and go into more details is that the, this is a by right provision, so it's not currently, does not currently require a special permit. So adding a special permit component at this point would not be allowed under this ordinance. You couldn't merely just make that change on the floor. That would actually require a new ordinance and new public hearing process. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. So it's occurring to me that we're, we're discussing both of these. So we should maybe move them as a group, Counselor Dwight?
Sure, first I'll move them as a group.
I'll second that.
Made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge, moving both of these ordinances as a group. Discussion on moving them as a group, Counselor Dwight?
No, it's actually discussion on the items, but yeah, sorry.
Let's roll call on that motion, please, and then I'll go to Counselor Dwight.
Counselor Jared?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
We're voting just to move them as a group, not voting on the items, I want to be clear on that.
That's right.
Right. We're not voting on the items, just to group them.
Just to group them, then in that case, yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yeah. You didn't think it would be that easy, Counselor Dwight.
No, that would be a whole new mess, so.
Okay, is that everybody? It just seemed, we were, we already were talking about both, so we should have them both on the floor if we're going to do that. Counselor Dwight?
So Carolyn, a lot of the comments that we've heard in the last, well, in the joint hearing that we had, that we heard tonight, for some reason, a lot of the comments seem to suggest, well, first of all, advise us against moving this ordinance from section 1014 to section 613 because it would neuter it because it's, the presumption is that it's, that it basically automatically invokes site plan review. But the fact is, is that that is not true. Am I right? That currently, as it stands, there is, there is no special permitting associated with, even though it's in this chapter, any project that came forward that would come under the aegis of this would not be subject to a special permit.
Correct. So it currently, the, all the requirements to follow for a lot layout currently reside in the chapter in its own subsection 10 and many of the other items in subsection 10 relate to special permit items. The, and frankly, the reason why it was there, I think, originally going back 25-plus years is because it was conceived of as being a possible layout configuration for cluster developments which were special permit. And so I think it was tacked on in that section, but for the last 15-plus years, it's just been referred to from the table of use where it's specified in the table of use under urban residential B and C that it's a by right, meaning you just file a building permit or approval not required plan showing the layout and dimensional requirements and the design requirements as spelled out in this specific subsection in 10. And so the idea is, since it really deals with dimensional and layout standards, it should, it's better suited to be in subsection six, which has all these other layout and dimensional requirements for other types of projects.
Okay, so in more digestible language, it's essentially, it's a vestigial tale sitting in this, in this, in this chapter and it really has no place there anymore. It's, 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 the, the rules have evolved past it. A point, the most salient point, of course, is the concern. What everyone's calling, what you heard everyone calling for, and we have been hearing everyone calling for is that when projects are proposed that would consider zero lot lines, that the special permit be invoked, but that is a false hope that's embedded in this. That's, moving this from A to B is not going to impact that one way or another. The, the impact, the, the results will be the same. It's just a question where someone is able to find it in, in the book. Now, the thing is, is of course, there is a movement to introduce or have council introduce or citizen introduction of a requirement of special permitting, but we cannot do that here on the floor. It's important, and you did mention that towards the end, that we cannot make that modification here on the floor. That's a significant, that is a complete change of the original order and as such would be a violation of open meeting law and also the way we conduct quality. So it's not, that's a Massachusetts law, that's not just me sitting here wheezing and making this crap. So it's not, that's a Massachusetts law. That's not just me sitting here wheezing and making this crap up, so. It's important that we understand that despite the appeals. That we've heard from the neighborhood in particular on Warner Street. None of that has to do with the price of beans at this point. And that we and I'm sorry, I'm really mixing my metaphors, but yeah, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to live with that. So in that respect. This is benign in both senses of the word. It's not going to do what people hope it would do and it doesn't inflict the damage. They think that it would present because virtually nothing, the enforcement of law and the zoning has not changed a jot. On this one item is just moving in a book. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Jared.
If I could speak to that point a little bit, just to clarify, there probably. Does a cluster development still require a special permit or is that a?
Yes, the cluster, so it the table of use defines a cluster. Has different requirements in different districts, but for each district, a cluster is still a special permit.
And and you can do zero lot line within a cluster development and it would be a special permit in that case.
Right, if you're also doing a cluster, then the cluster itself is what pumps it into special permit.
Right, okay, so one concern I've heard that if this is removed from the special permit section, then. The concern is that all of the uses that could that are in in that section could use. Zero lot line because in the layout section of the U R B and U R C, it says. Side setback equals zero feet on one side for zero lot line. And I spoke with attorney Seawald about this and he's of the opinion that the zero lot line is only allowed where it is explicitly specified. So and the only place it's explicitly specified is in the table of use where it says zero outline, single family. However, if we wanted to be extremely clear about this, we could say. Back up in the layout section, zero feet on one side for sync for zero outline, single family. So just add the word single family in there and he believes that that is it's not. It's just an administrative change of what's already intended, so it could be done. In this current. Process. So can you can you speak to that concern and?
Yes, I mean, the he right, Solicitor Seawall said, you know, if you wanted to sort of put. Felton suspenders on all of this and make sure that there was no question you could add for. Single family homes and I think you're referring to the first page of the table where there's. The dimensional, the setbacks for. For building lots, so that piece is not. In the council packet. But there could be an added reference in this ordinance. To state that on page one of attachment, whatever the attachment is, that that. Zero lot line reference to say zero lot. Single family.
Okay, well, I don't feel, since we have another reading, I'd rather confer with Solicitor Seawald about that and just have something. For certain if if, so I'm not going to move that now, but I just wanted to bring it up in case anyone. Also had heard that concern or just to address that.
Thank you, council president. Hello, Carolyn, thank you for being here tonight. So. The. So the the thing that always kind of sits the bottom of all of this for me is why don't we just make lot sizes smaller? You know, that I think that that's part of where the the. The this feeling of like, well, hold it, they got around what? You know, whoever the developer is or the the person building the project. It's like, hold it, they got around the rules by using this zero lot line thing and we have these established, you know. Lot sizes for single family homes. Would that be a more? I I'm just wondering why we don't go a route like that where, you know. When we use our table of uses, you open it up and say, oh, there you go, that's that's how big a lot can be and I'm I can build a single family house. Except if you think about using zero lot line and then you can open up all of these different doors. Could you could you speak to that?
Yeah, I wouldn't so much say that this is about reducing the lot size. I think it's really more about. Shifting the setbacks, so you're absolutely right that if we think that. Maybe our setbacks are too great and. Some districts, maybe they should be reduced because they we, you know. In we did this for urban residential C, which is the core neighborhood around downtown Northampton where about eight years ago. We redo this setbacks for D, C, actually A, B and C. Were all fifteen feet and because of the. Extraordinary number of pre-existing non-conforming setbacks in urban residential C that were well under fifteen feet. It was pretty. Straightforward to go in and say fifteen foot setback is not appropriate for urban residential C because we're sending all these people for the zoning board of appeal. So it got reduced to ten feet. At the same time, frontages were reduced to sort of reflect a lot of the house lots in each of those districts. But for B, we didn't at the same time reduce the setbacks like we did in urban residential C. So I think you're right that it may be more straightforward and it may be more appropriate to reduce side setbacks. In urban residential B and maybe even C again. And if that were the case, may the use of this tool may not be. As desirable or necessary because this is really about allowing particularly in. Narrower lots. They're still conforming lots, but they just happen to be narrower, allowing reduced setback because historically these narrower lots. Did have smaller setbacks to begin with.
Thank you.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes, thank you. Carolyn, I want to thank you very much. With all the calls that I've received about people being confused. Of everything that they were hearing about the zero lot lines, also about the special permits. A lot of people were being confused with the ordinances that are appearing here, so I want to thank you very much for all your help, Carolyn.
Sure. Okay. Councillor Jared and councillor Nash.
If councillor Nash is still, I'm going to move on to my. Some other things if councillor Nash wants to speak first, that's fine.
Thank you councillor, it's just more follow up questions, so um. So how often, so Carolyn, how often do? I mean, so zero lot line, in in my mind, it it it. It's this equitable solution in certain situations where there's a neighbor and then there's a lot like. I think there was that example you you showed during your PowerPoint that was in the upper right where there was that diagonal. You know, when somebody was able to put another home on there. And that. How, you know, how often? Does that, are we accessing this and and is that happening?
It sort of waxes and wanes, it's not, there's not a consistent, you know, probably every year we have. One or two, I mean, in the last, but in this year. We've had maybe. Probably in the last year, maybe we've had. Five or six and they're sort of spread out in different neighborhoods. You know, there's obviously a cluster in the Bay State neighborhood now, but we've had two of them come in and in. Your ward councillor Nash and the last year, there've been some in Ward two. So it's. It's variable, you know, I'd say one or two a year on average.
Yeah, and and so I I guess the, how would you address the? So the there's the application in those cases of where we're talking about, there's 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 a lot that a house could almost fit on. And that and this arrangement that this this particular ordinance allows for two single family. Homes to occur and then then we have the case of like a a development where we have like this small development going in. On Warner Street. Is there is there a way to delineate between those two situations? Is it that once you have the rule? It's going to apply in all of those different situations or is there a way we could say, well, in this, you know, this is. This is creates another circumstance.
Well, the way the zoning is set up is to say, here are the rules and they apply. No matter where you are, no matter what the situation is, again, to sort of get back at saying, okay, here's the stuff we want. So let's define it for everyone and make it clear and then. You know, not dictate every single little adjustment that someone might have because of the lot shape or. Topography or something like that, but allow some, you know, nuances to take place depending on where the property is. And we've done that with a lot of different types of developments to say pull them. In some instances, take them out of special permit, say, look, it doesn't, we don't need to review these every single time, let's just set up the rules. For what's supposed, what we want to happen on a property and then move it to by rights, so we're eliminating costs, we're eliminating barriers. And we're saying, look, we care about the kind of development we want, we care about what it looks like. And here are the rules, the idea isn't necessarily to, you know. Say we don't want development, but we want it the way we want it, and so we want to spell that out and make it accessible to people.
Thank you.
Councillor Dwight?
Councillor Jared, your pleasure, if that's okay, because I know I'm jumping, you were planning to speak, but.
Go ahead, go ahead.
One of the things I want to caution us about, and this has been present in all these hearings and all the other conversations. The focus has been on one particular developer and you saw him, he spoke tonight, in fact, actually he did also speak at the hearing. Making rules around a specific development or a specific developer, whether in favor or against is spot zoning and against the law. And I want us to be very cautious as we proceed and have these conversations, we're not talking about. A developer, we're talking about development and that it actually has to cover. It can't be as precise as people wish and hope it will be. You know, deal with my neighborhood issue, I'm not so concerned about necessarily anyone else's neighborhood because maybe they're not having the same problems with so and so. That we, you know, as we go forward, when we have these conversations, it is imperative. That we remember we're not making laws for specific people or companies or developers. Or specific neighbors who are being impacted, we are actually making holistic laws. With that are not a panacea, they're not an answer to the problems that we are trying to at least influence such as. Housing shortages, affordability and everything else in the community. And also then neighbors' concerns about impacts on neighborhood looks and appearance and so on and so forth. So I just, this has been a difficult conversation to have as a councillor and also as a committee member of these joint hearings. Because there is no project that's currently under review and that we would not have the authority to review a project. And I want us to be very, very careful as we proceed because that subjects us to and exposes us to liability. But more importantly, it's really unjust and unfair and does not do what zoning does, so. That's my caveat.
Thank you councillor Nash.
Is it okay councillor Jared?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Councillor Dwight, I appreciate the pushback because it 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 was providing the clarity that I that I was looking for there. And that and that. More broadly, yes, I I should have been a little more careful about talking about. Talking about a theoretical project rather than a Warner Street, but. Anyway, thank you for clarifying.
Councillor Jared?
All right, you ready for me?
Councillor Mayori had something to.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead councillor Mayori.
I just wanted to, I I actually really, I really appreciate what councillor Dwight. You know, brought us attention to, thank you for that. I do, I do want to just point out though that the the folks in that neighborhood. Are, you know, what I've heard from is they are concerned about every neighborhood in the in the city, you know, I don't I don't think. They would say they're concerned about the same issues that they are that they have in their neighborhood in other neighborhoods. I just wanted to put that out there.
So with with all that in mind. I'll go ahead and so I have an amendment which you've seen, but before we move on that amendment, I just want to briefly explain the reasons. And then have a discussion focused more on the ordinance in general, then we'll move, I'll move that particular amendment. So I did draft that proposed amendment to address several concerns. First is to provide more flexibility than the current options. In some of the permutations currently that requires the structure to sit right on the lot line and there's there's significant disadvantages. To that requires an easement for access and it's creating a situation where you don't own the land right outside your window. So I wanted to create for something that allows for that option, but also allows the lot line to be located. In the best place for that particular site, which could take into account existing site features such as trees and a better. And second, to set the width between structures based on the, you know, the setbacks. To be closer to the historical development pattern of the districts, so in the urban residential B district, which surrounds Florence Center. Bay State neighborhood and the areas further away from downtown as Carolyn described. It would require a twenty foot minimum distance between the principal structures and in the U R C district. That which, as we heard, has houses much closer together, it would be ten feet, which is actually the same as the original proposal, but with more. Flexibility and then as Carolyn said, the term reduced lot line rather than zero. Because zero is only one of the options. So my concern with the zero or reduced lot line in general. Is that it allows larger houses on smaller lots without the review and the requirements. That a multi-unit construction would would require. So I think it's no coincidence that we're hearing concerns about development that use the zero lot line provision because. This style of development, several houses in in some cases, I mean, this can be just two houses, but sometimes it's several houses at the same time. Closer together than normally allowed, was expected by many to go through a site plan as a minor or major projects. Or the special permit process depending on its size. So, you know, the zero lot line has advantages. Carolyn talked about some of them, the current setbacks often don't meet the historical development patterns, so there are many sections of our neighborhoods that. Could not be rebuilt were they to burn down because you would have to have them further apart than they they have been historically. As I said, it allows for buildings to move, to adjust to the site conditions. It allows people to own their home without a condo association or other legal structure that adds costs and complexity. But the disadvantages I would say is it doesn't trigger things like the significant tree ordinance, the fossil fuel free requirements, traffic mitigation. Erosion control, impact on city utilities, many more that the multifamily project would, including one that could be structured. As several detached homes on a lot. So I guess my question for the council is, you know, are the benefits of zero? So, um, I guess my question for the council is, you know, are the benefits of zero or reduced lot line worth the loss of the review and control, uh, that we get, that we just can't do with normal single-family house projects? And so, you know, my answer is, is yes, in certain circumstances, but I'm, I'm struggling with, you know, where do you set that threshold? And so I'm conflicted with, uh, where that, where that threshold would, is, is appropriate. And would appreciate thoughts that the other counselors have or Carolyn has as well.
Council Dwight?
Carolyn, historically, as, as, let's, let's presume Council Jared's proposal, and presume that's in effect. But historically, have, um, is we, as you pointed out, and Council Jared had mentioned, that was essentially, our, a, a good portion of this community was developed without zoning in existence. There weren't even concerns relative to, for instance, fire safety and proximity and everything else. It was just, you own the land, put up your house, you're, you're allowed to do that by right. And now, as zoning has evolved and the fact that we now employ it as a tool actually to try and manage certain types of housing stock and certain, certain types of housing situations. But it's, as I mentioned before in another meeting, it's a blunt tool, it's not a precision instrument. It doesn't do, it doesn't serve every purpose for everybody. But in the main, what Council Jared's proposing, and I have to admit, it, it, it sounds reasonable to me. But is there, do you see any disadvantages that, um, over, you know, a lot of people keep referring to, what's the city's agenda? Or, or more crudely, in some cases, who's paying off whom, we've heard inferred at some point. But what, what is it, I mean, what holistically is the objective here that we can, we're trying to achieve?
Well, again, this is a single-family house type. So we don't require site plan or special permit for any single-family homes. We don't require site plan review, um, or special permit for any kind of detached, single-family house lots, no matter how many, you know, how big of a parcel you purchase and then create through A and R, approval not required, just carving up the street, along the side of the street, creating lots. No matter how many single-family house lots you create, it's still a single-family home. So this ordinance is really about allowing a single-family home to be, um, to have flexibility to be located on a parcel, to, uh, uh, potentially avoid special features like, um, trees or if there's the ledge or, um, some other, um, feature that really should be or, um, avoided. And so you want to slide that structure over one way or the other. So I don't, I don't think, and, and the intention is not, this tool isn't intended to try to limit the size of a structure. There are a lot of other parameters in the zoning that exist for every single, uh, structure, whether it's a single, two, three, however many units, um, and that's open space. It's the amount of parking that would be allowed on a park or required to be provided on the, um, parcel and how that affects the open space. That's what's going to dictate how big a structure, um, you can put on the property. And again, with single-family homes, there isn't a tree replacement, just like any one of you all that, in your homes, if you feel like cutting down a tree, you can do that and there's no tree replacement trigger for removing a tree on your property. So I, I think, and the only tool, I mean, it's a new, um, sort of requirement, has been about, um, sort of pushing more towards fossil fuel free systems. And we, yes, we're, we've started to look at using that in the, in the context of site plan review for, in the situation, two-family homes and, or other situations that trigger site plan. So I guess, um, I don't see this as a loss of review, because it's never been there for a single-family home.
Council Jared?
Um, I, I definitely hear what you're saying, Carolyn. I do want to push back a little bit, though, because I think that it, it allows for, it allows for what we've seen, you know, example, many examples of throughout the city, but what, larger homes closer together. And there is some kind of threshold. You know, for example, we, we set a, a threshold so that you can't just put, you know, houses, many houses in a row, uh, right next to each other, even in the townhouse. For, I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't do a row house with this, for example. That would, uh, you, you'd have to do something, some other type of permit to do that. And so what I'm thinking about is, you know, where, where is that space? What is the minimum amount of space in terms of setbacks that is appropriate for this? And if someone wants to do something where you, you have structures closer, then they need to go through the other process, processes. So that, that's kind of my point is, is this, where is the right place for that, that level of density versus where you need that, that further review? Does that make sense?
Um, I don't, um, it could be that, um, the lateness of the hour, but I guess I'm not picking up exactly maybe what you're saying. I think that, I understand that you're, um, the issue about having, um, multiple units on a property or even multiple units detached on a single property, um, and then that triggers a review. I guess I keep coming back to the fact that this is just another way to lay out a single-family house. And, um, I think the amendments, um, address some of that concern about separation between structures. I don't think the intention of the tool is to dictate how big or small a house can be. And certainly, the houses that have been built, I mean, the largest house that I think that's been built with this tool is the one example on my first slide, is, um, a very large house, but for the most part, every other house has, is fairly narrow, because they're on 50-foot wide lots. And even the houses that are being built in Bay State are not large homes, um, compared to other homes in the city or in Bay State. So I don't, I, you know, again, it's not, the tweaks for this were really meant to look at the patterns along the street and creating a more of a, um, a consistent rhythm between houses that might use this tool. So, you know, with this, it ended up, um, the amendment as change coming out of legislative matters was a reduction of five feet, up to a maximum of five feet reduction between, um, of a setback, a side setback. Um, and then what you're proposing is, um, essentially comes to the same space, except it allows the setback to be smaller on one side of the lot or the other, but it maintains that sort of pattern of 20 feet of separation between structures. So I, you know, I think ultimately, that's from our perspective, what we were trying to address was the concern about that design and rhythm along the street, as opposed to how big someone would opt to build their house.
Yeah, well, um, unless someone else wants to speak more generally, I could go ahead and make, and move the amendment.
Council Dwight?
I, I, I want to understand what we're trying to achieve here. And, and my guess is that, given the conversations that we've had, and not just about Bay State, but other neighborhoods that have come speaking out of concern of any development that's been proposed in their neighborhood. And it's, and the, and I'm only going to speak to the things that, that were said out loud, as opposed to things that might have been implied. But what was hit upon frequently and, and repeatedly throughout the community is the maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood or the sense of the neighborhood or the design style of the neighborhood. It was even invoked when the lumberyard project came up, which was really crazy, because we're talking about single-story cinder block garages and that there was somehow in conflict with that. I, and so that always makes me feel uncomfortable, that conversation. I understand the impulse and I understand the desire to do that, because you have a neighborhood that you've become accustomed to as you know it. And any modifications or changes that change a landscape that you have no control over is immediately going to evoke in any of us the same kind of visceral rejection and response. But I think as we make the rules, I want to be careful. If we're, if, if, the, if we subject these to the type of scrutiny and review that most of us, uh, enjoy the absence of, but actually, most of us haven't really done anything, actually, I imagine none of us have actually built anything necessarily. But I, I, it, it just makes me always feel a little squeamish when we start to, respond to emotional impulses by creating, um, a, a, a barrier towards, um, the creation of housing that clearly is in demand now and, um, and limited. I mean, I, I think to Carolyn's original point, the lot more or less defines the dimensions in many respects. And so, you know, as I said, there's proximate to me, there's, um, a house that used to be a, a, I think, a five-family apartment, with a deep lot. It is now a single-family home, maybe even a second home, I don't know, that's taken up the whole lot. And the fact is, is that while that wouldn't have been my first choice, I don't think it should be my choice. It should not be up to me to say what goes there or doesn't go there. But that's, that's me in my little civil libertarian mode, so I'll defer to it. But I, I actually appreciate what you're suggesting, Council Jared, because I do think your struggle is similar to my struggle. So I think, and although I, I'm probably a little crankier and a little less forgiving than you, but that's because I'm a hardened cynic who's been your way too long.
On that note, Council Jared, would you like to make your motion?
Yes, um, so Carolyn and I, um, talked and Carolyn kind of put together a, a cleaned up version, you know, without all of the many changes. But I, I think I'd rather introduce, um, my version and then talk about what Carolyn suggested for changes, because you all have actually had the chance to look at, at my version. So Laura, are you able to bring up the, um, the amendment that I proposed? So, um, oh, by the way, uh, so I move, uh, this amendment as written.
Second.
Okay.
All right, and if you could zoom in a little bit, it's pretty small. Okay, so all of my revisions are in orange. And, um, the first part, uh, if you scroll down, that's in, in orange. Uh, so yeah, this first part just details that, um, the revisions are in orange. And then there's a, a, a black line through the diagrams to show that they propose to be removed. So the first part, um, is just changing the terms to reduce lot line, uh, rather than zero. And then it also, um, talks about how it can be zero or more feet on one side. Uh, and continues, this part's all the same, uh, except for the language change. And then in two, um, really two I I is the major change here. Uh, it come, it does remove the part about the reduced side setback, um, of up to five feet, but that's because it, it basically encompasses that, uh, in now in I I. So has a reduction from the standard setback, such that the setback on one lot and the setback on an adjoining, commonly owned lot, added together, maybe 10 feet less than double the standard setback. So to give some examples, in the U R B district, um, the, the setback is 15 feet. So double that is 30 feet, and this would allow you to have, um, uh, 10, I think, I'm not sure if that should say maybe up to 10 feet less, or if may already includes that. It would be clearer to actually say maybe up to 10 feet less. So in that case, you could have structures that are, uh, 20 feet apart. And the lot line position can be anywhere in there, from zero, right? That means like right on a building or in the middle or, you know, it's, it's flexible as to the position of where the actual lot line goes. And if you scroll down a little bit more, uh, Laura, there's, um, my proposed diagram called Reduced Lot Line Lots. And, um, that kind of describes, um, what's possible as far as the, the 10-foot, uh, reduction in combined setbacks on each side. Uh, so it tries to encompass, uh, everything that, that was there, um, but, but extends the, the distances. In the, it actually only extends the district, district, distances in the U R B district. In the U R C district, we have a setback of 10 feet. So double that is 20, and you can reduce that by 10. But it allows more flexibility as to where you put that lot line within that, that 10 feet, min, min, minimum 10 feet. You can always do more. Uh, so maybe I'll stop there and just take questions about, uh, that particular, where, so far, because that was a lot to throw out.
Let me make sure I can see everybody. Carolyn?
I, I was just going to say, I don't know if this, I'm hoping this helps, but I think it's really, um, the, the modification from what, um, was discussed coming out of legislative matters is really just, um, uh, allowing for that flexibility of where that lot line is located. Whereas what came out of legislative matters was, um, you had to maintain at least 10 feet of setback for each, um, structure. So effectively, um, coming out of legislative matters, you had a 20-foot, um, separation between structures, uh, you know, you could, up to 20 feet, but the lot line would be right down the middle of that. Whereas what Council Jared is proposing is the same 20 feet. It's just, um, you have flexibility, as he said, to sort of, um, locate that line anywhere in there. Because of course, on the property, you're not going to see the line, it's really about where the structures are located.
But I would clarify, uh, if you see on the screen right now, we have I I, well, it's currently crossed out. But in that arrangement, um, that's described, it is possible to do houses that, where one side is, like if you look at the middle lot there, one side is right on the lot line and then on the other side, it has the minimum setback. So, um, that would be, you know, 15 feet in U R B and 10 feet in U R C. But the house, uh, you know, has to basically fill, um, all that it can to achieve that. So it was, it would, they would have to be pretty wide houses. It's not that likely, uh, a scenario, but it is possible in that scenario. And, um, with the amendment, it's, it makes it more clear that you need that, uh, 20 in U R B or 10 in, in U R C, uh, distance in all cases.
Council Nash?
I appreciate, really appreciate the discussion going on, going on between Ms. Mish and, um, Council Jared. So, um, so why, Council? So, so why, Counselor Jarrett, what's the, I'll call them the squishy boundary line. What's the advantage of having that rather than the lot, the line right down the middle?
So you, you know, depending on different site features. And I think this might be more appropriate, more, more used on, on the edges. But so, for example, so say, let's look at the, say there are there's trees that you want, you want to move the house away from. So that you, you know, the house foundation doesn't impact their root systems. Then you can move that house toward, you know, toward a line, but don't have to have it all the way just right on the line. And so it just gives you that, that flexibility. And in a lot of cases, it probably would be right in the middle. But based on the different, you know, lot size, you know, lot widths, then you may want to have one house be moved slightly, you know, to the, to the right or to the left to avoid certain natural features. That if you had to have it right in the middle and you had, you know, these certain setbacks you had to accommodate, that you might, wouldn't be able to avoid those.
Thank you.
So we could scroll down and see just the rest of it, which is pretty minimal, the change, except to say that the five foot maintenance easement, it's only required when you're dealing with a setback that's less than five feet. Like when you have the lot, essentially when you have the house, you know, right on a lot line or within five feet of it, then you need that maintenance easement because you need to be able to maintain your house. And that's probably something people are going to try to avoid when possible. Because that's an additional thing you have to create. And then you also have that issue of not owning the land right outside your house. And I think that's all the changes. And Carolyn, do you want to just, to just discuss the suggestions that you made?
Well, it might be better to, I mean, I think they were just cleaning up, trying to tighten the language more that you had proposed. So there, I don't, I don't see them as significant. I think it makes sense to, you know, if the council wants to entertain this adjustment, I think it makes sense to, you know, eliminate the graphics or take out one of those graphics that shows the, the series of lots on the lot line and just sort of simplify that. And really, that's, I mean, the nature of the draft that I sent back to you was really trying to put it all together. So I, I wouldn't say there was anything, you know, substantive that changed about that.
Yeah, so we could, maybe there's a couple of ways to proceed here. One is to, to vote on this amendment and then, and work on the final language and bring that to the second reading. Or I could withdraw this amendment and we could come up with the final language for the second reading. Not sure what people are more comfortable with.
Right.
Well, once again, we come into this second reading problem. I mean, I would recommend that absent solid language that we feel comfortable voting on, that we postpone the vote for the next meeting. And then, well, with the language introduced on the floor there in toto, so it's just cleaner that way. And, but, you know, I defer to whatever the council would prefer. We could do the first reading tonight and then the second reading in two weeks. But we also have the mechanism in our rules to postpone and delay the vote, particularly. We have minority reconsideration also, even if we did vote. So, but I would recommend that we postpone for further disco, massaging, if you will. And, and that's to say I have no objection to the proposed amendment, so.
And you're just speaking to the amendment. We would still pass the, the.
The first, the first article, I don't, I don't see any problem or difficulty with that. And the second article that we're, that we're working on here, I think that it's appropriate, one way or another. I think it's appropriate to, there's, there's no reason for us to, to consider a vote tonight in that I would suspect, as has been pointed out this late hour, and there's probably no end of some confusion. I mean, I'll speak from personally, I'm a little confused. And, and so I don't think it's appropriate for us to render a vote on the second item. When, point of fact, I believe I actually respect and have admired the diligence that you've invested in this. And I think working with Carolyn and this solicitor, it would nice, it'd be nice to have a clean document to consider. And with a little less foggy your heads, hopefully.
Can you clarify what, sorry, can you clarify what the second item? What do you mean by the second item? Because these are a group, they're a group.
We move, we move two items as a group. So the second item is article is ordinance, bum, 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 21, 218. No, yeah, right? That's what we're proposing. I'm recommending, yeah, so I recommend we separate the items, vote on the first item, and then delay a vote for the second item for further information.
Okay. So Counselor Jarrett's amendments on the floor, though, yes?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so I, yeah, okay, why don't I withdraw? I'll withdraw the amendment. And Bill, or Counselor Dwight, I think you have to withdraw the second.
I do.
Okay. And so now we're back to discussing the, the whole thing. I want to say that, you know, that I've gotten additional requests to really work to prevent like 30 foot houses on 50 foot lots. And I'm, although I, you know, I, I hear those concerns, I feel like, you know, given what, that we're not here to directly establish how wide houses can be. And that by setting the, the question of, you know, how far apart they are, that we, we will, we, we're maintaining that, that rhythm, that of, of the street that's more historically, that fits more the historical pattern. And so I'm not, at this time, going to move forward on, on something that would try to enforce that further. But we will have another reading and we can continue to discuss that. And I will with my constituents as well. So I just wanted to speak to that before we moved further.
Okay. Counselor Labarge?
Yes, I have to agree with what I heard from Counselor Dwight. I was a little confused again. And I can imagine other people were confused also with this second amendment that was coming in. And I want to thank you, Counselor Jarrett, for speaking out and waiting until our next voting coming in, which I think is very, very critical for that second reading. And there are so many people that are watching what is happening here and being confused, I mean confused, with all the different languages. I mean, even I know engineers that have been calling Carolyn on these proposed changes happening here. So I want to thank you for thinking about this now. And do what you have to do and bring that amendment for our second reading. And I think it would give all of us the opportunity to understand exactly what you want to do here. Because it's becoming so confusing. I thank you for that.
Jarrett?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Labarge. That makes a lot of sense. I know I have spent hours and hours on the phone with Carolyn under, trying to understand this and come up with something. And so I think Carol and I will be able to work together to provide a clean copy that will be very understandable.
Thank you very much.
So I feel like I've heard two different things. I want to know what the council's pleasure is. Do we want, or maybe three things? Do we want to separate these out again and, and vote on one and postpone the other? Do we want to take a first reading as a group? Maybe those are the options. Counselor Dwight?
Well, I've shared my, my thoughts on that, so. So whatever the rest of the council would prefer. I, just to make the point, to hone the point, it would be cleaner to proceed by separating the items, voting on the one that we probably feel more confident about and postponing. I think it is actually our responsibility to do that. Because as we work and massage the language on this, we need clarity for, in order to have a debate. And as we move to quarter to midnight, we're about to transition into the next day and there's so much more of the agenda to do. I just don't think it's appropriate for us to consider something we're not really sure about yet. And I think that we, yeah, so the motion is to separate the two items and vote on the first one. And then I'll have a motion on the second one.
Laura, do we need to do a, sorry, who's the second?
That was me.
Laura, do we need to do a roll call on separating them?
Yeah, I would think so.
So, okay, the motion is to, the motion is just at this moment to separate, ungroup these two ordinances. And it was seconded by Counselor Quinlan. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Okay. Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
I move to approve the first item, which.
21.217.
Thank you.
Motion's been made. Seconded, seconded by Counselor Maori, I believe. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Maori? Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Did that pass in first reading?
I move to postpone the vote to the, our next meeting for item 218, right, 218?
21.218, yeah. Motion's made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
And Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Okay, that has been postponed to our next meeting. Which means we are gonna scoot, scoot, scoot back up to the consent agenda. I am gonna read the consent agenda and then I will ask for removals and then we will vote. Okay, so on the consent agenda, the minutes of April 1st, 2021. B, issue license to storm plantables and bustles at 140 Olander Drive to North Commons at Village Hill LLC. C, approved 21.238 National Grid Horizon Poll Petition for One, jointly owned pole on Damon Road. Two, D, approved 21.239 National Grid Horizon Poll Petition for Two, jointly owned poles on Burt's Pit Road. E, 21.237 Reappointments to various committees for referral to City Services Committee. So the Arts Council, Danielle Amadeo, 50 Union Street, Department 13, North Hampton, term July 2021, June 2024, there's a reappointment. Freeman Stein, 27 Fairfield Avenue in Florence, July 2021, June 2024, reappointment. Councilon Agent Cynthia Langley, 419 Fairway Village in Leeds, term July 2021, June 2024, reappointment. Housing Partnership, Jennifer Derringer, 16 North Street, North Hampton, term July 2021, June 2024, to fill a vacancy. Urban Forestry Commission, Jen Warner, 16 Wintor Street, North Hampton, term July 2021, June 2024, reappointment. Molly Hale, 96 Oak Street, Florence, term July 2021, June 2023, this is a reappointment. That is the consent agenda. Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. There is no discussion, so roll call, please, on the consent agenda, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe? Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
And Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Okay, extension passes and we are now going to recess for the committee on finance. Laura, when you're ready, please call the role of finance.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes, here.
Counselor Shara?
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Here.
Okay, first item, approval minutes from April 1st, 2021.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes pass and we're moving on to 21.271. In order to authorize Conservation Commission to acquire Massachusetts Autobahn Society Conservation Restriction. Whereas, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narquitz, Plan Sustainability and the Conservation Commission. Whereas the Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Trail Plan 2018 to 2025 recommends preservation of ecologically valuable land and filling gaps between protected lands within the Connecticut River Greenhead. And whereas the Massachusetts Autobahn Society has an agreement to purchase 16.5 acres in the meadows adjoining land already permanently protected as part of Arcadia Wildlife Sanctuary. And whereas in exchange for $2,000 contribution to the purchase price to be provided from the Community Preservation Act Conservation Fund already on hand, the Massachusetts Autobahn Society will grant the city a conservation restriction on the property. And whereas the project will advance the city's partnership with Mass Autobahn to provide public access to the meadows, create and maintain grassland, bird habitat, and protect ecologically valuable flood in forest. Order that the Conservation Commission is authorized to acquire for conservation and passive recreation purposes as provided by Master law, chapter 40, section 8c. Any fee easement or conservation restriction is defined in Master law, chapter 184, section 31, or any other interest in the above land and any immediately adjoining land. That the city council hereby accepts such conservation restrictions that the Conservation Commission is authorized to accept conservation restrictions on any land so acquired with such related restrictions and agreements as the city determines are agreeable. Okay, and we already heard that Mayor Narquitz is on tap for this.
Actually, I would, I would, I mean, I think the order is fairly straightforward. But Counselor Thorpe, did you want to provide the information you received since this is near your ward?
Yes, Mayor, so I spoke briefly to Sarah LaValle regarding this and she, she sent me an email. So I'm going to read from her email. The Massachusetts Autobahn Society has negotiated the purchase of 16 acres in the meadows at Potash and Old Springfield Roads. This area? This area entirely within the flood plain includes wildlife and bird nesting habitat. Including areas identified as priority for rare and endangered species. The property is almost entirely surrounded by protected open space owned either by the Conservation Commission or Mass Audubon. It will make a valuable addition to Arcadia Wildlife Sanctuary. In exchange for a two thousand dollar contribution to the purchase price to make the purchase work for Mass Audubon. The city in care of the Conservation Commission will be granted a permanent conservation restriction. This will not only further our long partnership with Mass Audubon. But will act as a belt and suspenders method of double protection to make sure this will be open space forever. The contribution will come from the Conservation Fund, a fund awarded using the Community Preservation Act funding. To allow for fast action as well as due diligence when needed for open space preservation purposes. The funds awarded in a prior round and approved by the council are already on hand. The attached order for consideration at Thursday's meeting, this will approve the city's holding of the conservation restriction only. No funding is sought with this order. Thank you.
Carolie add to that.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Great, seeing none, roll call, do we put this on the floor?
No.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion with a positive recommendation to full city council.
Motion made by councillor Labarge, seconded by councillor Thorpe. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
And councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward to council. That's the only other item, so is there?
Move to adjourn finance?
Motion made by councillor Quinlan, seconded by councillor Labarge. Roll call on adjourning, please, Laura.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
And councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned out of financing back in the full council where we will take up that twenty one point two seven one. Order to authorize Conservation Commission to acquire Massachusetts Audubon Society Conservation Restriction. This is on first reading. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, please.
Second.
First one by councillor Quinlan, seconded by councillor Dwight. Any discussion on the full council? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Maori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
And councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. Moving on to financial orders on second reading, twenty one point two six five, in order authorizing acquisition and establishment of a municipal light plant.
Moved to approve.
Motion's made by councillor Labarge, seconded by councillor Jarrett. Discussion on second reading. None, roll call please, Laura.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Maori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
And councillor Shara.
Yes.
Okey dokey, that passes on second reading. Moving on, so we're up to ordinances not yet referred. So I'm gonna read this process note, which is due to not having sufficient information, Legislative Matters forwarded twenty one point two four zero, two four one, two four two, and two four three. To the full council on May tenth, twenty twenty one, with a neutral recommendation. Since then, in consultation with the DPW Director and Council President. There has been a request to refer these ordinances back to Legislative Matters for further discussion.
Move to refer all. How many items is it? Three of them?
Four.
Or four of them, sorry, items twenty one, two forty, two, two forty three. Back to Legislative Matters for consideration.
Second.
Made by councillor Dwight, seconded by councillor Thorpe. Any discussion? Councillor Jarrett.
Didn't the twenty one point two four zero actually receive a positive recommendation? I mean, it's fine to refer it back. I just wanted, I, 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 that was what I remembered.
If you remember correctly, point of fact did. But it, I think it'd be better if we actually had someone representing the TPC or the TPW. To expand on it further. I mean, everyone agreed, but based on. Feelings and I'm. I think it's way too important to discuss on feelings, so I think it'd be important for it to go back. Since we've employed the metaphor belts and suspenders about twice tonight, I'm going to go for a third and say that's what I would consider this to be.
All right, well, belt and suspender it. Any other discussion on referring these back? Councillor Nash.
Would councillor Dwight like one of the councillors from TPC to attend that meeting?
I'd have no objection. I believe we'll have someone from the DPW, if not the director, who will be coming, but. That would be helpful. This is a. It's a difficult conversation, so the more people are participating, I would encourage that participation to help us. Have a fuller understanding about what the issues are. Very good.
The DPW Director vowed to be there, though. Councillor Foster, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to. Double check, and that makes sense to refer it back, so there's a chance to talk with DPW and councillor Nash, and I can, can be there as well. I know that there was. A desire for timing with this. You know, this, this did come to TPC, so I just wanted to check on. Sort of think out loud through what the timing would look like. So this would go back to Legislative Matters. For early June and then potentially come back to, to council. And late June.
Well, that, that concern was brought up to. I think we're waiting to hear back from the DPW Director. That concern was brought up to her and. I think, Laura, I can't remember if the offer was made to try and have a special meeting of Legislative Matters if.
I didn't actually make the offer. I just asked if it was a problem that Legislative Matters wasn't meeting until June tenth. So we can go back to council till the twentieth, the seventeenth.
I mean, maybe we'll, we can reach out again tomorrow and, and say that. If there's a concern, we can try and schedule another meeting. Councillor Dwight, you're the chair there, so I defer to you.
I'm open to that. I, I just want to emphasize that while I appreciate that there might be some time constraints, that actually even speaks to. The, the other political issue that dimensioned this that actually informed part of our conversation, so. And when we have these time conflicts, we try to create as many opportunities to move it. In, in expeditious way, but at the same time. The most important thing is the fact that we're making law and. You know, when push comes to shove. Time constraints are going to not win out over thoughtful and deliberate debate, so. But I don't see how, I, I don't see that we could have, would have a problem reconciling, provided we get all the, all the players to, to be able to meet and convene in a special meeting.
Any other discussion? Councillor Maori.
Right, I lost my internet there for a minute. Did Director LaScalia. Express a concern about the timing?
We haven't heard.
No.
Yet.
Oh, I thought you, you had talked to her.
Um, we.
Sent an email yesterday.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Said, you know, we understand this will be moving this.
Okay.
Farther into the spring or summer, so is that a concern?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please, Laura, on.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Maori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
And councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, those go back to Legislative Matters and look at that, we've done these other ordinances. So unless I'm missing something, I think we've come to an end.
Boy, I sure like to move to adjourn.
Second.
Councillor Jarrett. Roll call please, Laura, on adjourning.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Maori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
And councillor Dwight.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. See you next week.
Thank you, guys.
See you. See you a lot next week. See you. Got it, yes.
Bye.
Bye.